All right, continuing on with the agenda. We're at number eight.
Actually, did you get an approval? Number five?
Yeah.
I don't know if they listed.
Okay. To move back to the agenda number five, I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda? State aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Obviously approved.
I, 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 please second it. Please.
Okay. So brings us to number eight, consent agenda. Motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Was, uh, play my action. I told, uh, I don't know if that's the discussion. Is that personal action, Kelly, the personal action memorandum, is that part of the, this part of the?
Consent agenda?
Consent.
Which one?
Well, you have two. You have hires, then there's, but there's also a personnel action memorandum.
That's just for informational purposes, the one at the end of it?
The last page.
The last page?
No. One, all right. Teacher hire. That's part of that.
That's part of.
Can I pull that? I have a question on that.
Can I get a motion to? Can we pull it up for those things?
Yeah, I need a second.
Hang in motion to pull the?
So Mike moved, I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor of pulling, um, teacher hires or the action memorandum separately? State aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That separately. Anything else under consent agenda that we pull out separately? Since you're going to the right of my head. Hearing none. All those in favor of the remaining items on consent agenda? State aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Pull, I'm gonna go to the action, the hiring memorandum discussion.
Kelly, on the, on the special ed teachers, can you talk to, are we adding a special ed teacher? What does that do with the two TC, I see two locations of test corners, I'm assuming, and the Mary Lind?
The Mary Lind Meyer, that is a, a.
4K.
4K provider, so that Samantha will be supporting the 4K as an early childhood special education support person as well as test corners. And we had somebody retire from that position, so that is a hire to replace that position. And the other test corners is actually filling a position where a, another special education teacher is being transferred to another school due to a retirement, and so we are filling that position, um, from a transfer. Is that accurate, Dennis?
So we're not adding any positions for special ed or 4K per se?
We're just, these are all replacements, so.
Right.
When pulling, we're not adding.
Right. It's just that it wasn't a retirement at test corners, but there were retirements at the high school.
So, yeah, one will be, should be transferring.
Exactly.
Being in support at that 4K.
Right. For disability. So students who are, who have, who might have a disability, who are enrolled in the Mary Lind Meyer School will be supported by Samantha.
Do our other ones support other facilities? Our other special ed's? I mean, why this one?
Why Mary Lind Meyer? Tammy, you want?
Yeah, so we have certain students who, based on their IPs, require different services. So we have specialized students in all 4K sites. However, the needs in the other 4K sites are things like speech, language, occupational therapy, and our services go to them, but it's on a, you know, a few times per week basis. The Mary Lind Meyer piece, we have a cluster of students who we place in one 4K site based on their IP because of the services that need to be provided directly from the specialized teacher. So we chose, the first year 4K, we chose it to be discovery days, and then last year, the last two years, it's been, we've had that same facility at, at Mary Lind Meyer. We're continuing at Mary Lind Meyer, mostly because the accessibility of the physical space.
Okay, so it's, if I understand, we, someone, someone wants maybe with some more special needs or something?
Correct.
Cool, and that's the kind of, okay.
Highest team teaching.
Okay.
Highest need specialized.
All right, so we're not adding replacements. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We need to vote on that one then. Consent, so. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. It's on the item nine, reports, superintendent's report.
Okay, first, we'd like to recognize Sam Frazier for his service as student council representative. So, here.
I'd like to recognize Sam for all his work and effort he's put on the board this year, so we have this. I forget that signed by, well, right now, three fourths of the officers. Mr. Schaefer will be able to sign it when he gets here shortly. And it states, whereas Sam Frazier has served the youth of Meskego Norway School District representing the Meskego High School Student Council to the Meskego Norway School Board during the 2012-13 school year, and whereas Sam Frazier has regularly attended Meskego Norway School Board meetings in its capacity as student council representative to the Meskego Norway School Board, and whereas during this time, Sam Frazier has capably and thoroughly reported to the school board student activities, events, community service projects, and has acted as a liaison to the student body on behalf of the Meskego Norway School Board, and whereas Sam Frazier has served responsibly and effectively by demonstrating exceptional leadership and knowledge and his willingness, and willingly giving of his personal time to represent his fellow classmates. Now therefore, the Meskego Norway School District does hereby commend Sam Frazier for his past service and wish him well as he goes on in his academic and career endeavors. And sign this date of June by the school board. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so first and foremost, I wanted to specifically address the board in regard to my wonderful experience being the 2012-2013 School Board Representative of the Meskego High School Student Body. As I stand before you now, I can honestly say that this experience has made a significant impact on my life. As you remember, I was quite nervous the first time I was introduced to you all, that I was tongue-tied and did not know what to say. However, now I can say that things are very different. Over the past year, I've come to know many of you, while including Mrs. Gibbons, Mr. Brett Falsky, and Dr. Thompson, who have all been instrumental part of my success over not only the past year, but throughout my high school career. I want to thank every one of you for allowing me this opportunity, graced me with open arms on a biweekly basis, and encouraging me every step of the way. I truly look up to all of you, not just as leaders in the districts, but as inspirations for my future endeavors. As many of you know, I will be attending the University of Wisconsin-Madison in the fall in pursuit of attaining a biology degree in hopes of entering the medical field later on. I can assure you that my leadership will not end at Meskego High School, as I plan on carrying my leadership skills that I have learned from the board and through my experience into various clubs at Madison. As of yesterday, I was assigned the dorm of Witty, so if any of you guys find yourself in Madison and want to say hello, you will know where to find me. I will love visitors. Thank you again, it's been an honor serving with you all. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Now, the second item on the superintendent's report is a summary of the educator effectiveness and our plan moving forward, and actually, our principal lead, Alan Growth, will be walking us through the presentation, so. Thank you, Alan. Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. Good evening. Hello. Good evening, board members, audience, and those of you who might be watching at home. My name is Alan Growth, I am the principal at Lakeview School, so tonight, I'm going to give you a brief presentation of the educator effectiveness pilot currently underway with the Department of Public Instruction, of which our district has been a part of. Two targets I'd like to hope that by the end of this presentation, you'll have better understanding for, and the first one is that you'll gain a broad understanding of Wisconsin's Educator Effectiveness Initiative, and I've kind of termed that EE. And then secondly, compare and contrast our district's current feedback approach with the state's new educator effectiveness initiative. I believe this quote, "The most important factor affecting student learning is the teacher," by Bob Marzano, is central to the state of Wisconsin's initiative. Ultimately, what makes a difference for student learning is what happens inside the classroom, so central to this work and this initiative really is, it's all about instruction. So to begin, why is the Department of Public Instruction initiated a statewide educator effectiveness system? I felt it was important to pull together some pieces of background that have been occurring in the state over the past three years, which you might have learned about at the board table, but I thought even for the listeners here tonight in the audience and those at home, just a snippet of what's been going on will give you a better understanding why the state is moving to such a big initiative. Race to the top. So you'll know that the Obama administration came forward with a large grant potential for states throughout the country. Wisconsin was one of those applicants in 2010, and things that Wisconsin committed to in their grant application included things like implementing rigorous standards, attracting and keeping great teachers, developing data systems which improve instruction, highlighting strong schools and plan for schools which need support. Many of these items, which you're starting to see actually form or come through things that the Department of Public Instruction is currently putting into implementation. Additionally, Act 166, many of the applications that went to the federal government included legislation to show the government that the state was actually really and sincerely committed to their efforts. We did the same. So 2011, this act was put into law, it included creating a Read to Lead Development Fund to support literacy. It required annual assessing of students in kindergarten, which would be the PALS assessment currently being used. It required evaluation of teacher prep programs. In red here, you'll see, it required the development of a state teacher effectiveness evaluation system. So when this act was put into law, it positioned the state to say that this will happen. It included the evaluation of teachers in four domains, and it included a combination of student achievement and performance indicators. These are the actual domains. These domains have been used in our district now for well over seven years. They're the Danielson, it's called the Danielson Framework. They're segmented into four areas: planning, the classroom environment, instruction, professional responsibilities. So the Department of Public Instruction is now mandating in two years that all districts throughout the state will use these. Another area, the No Child Left Behind waiver. Wisconsin issued one in 2012, and it included in their waiver that they would, A, there would be college and career-ready expectations, which includes now what you're reading about as the requirement of ACT assessment for all students, and was in our high school. Differentiated recognition, which you've seen come through now, the school, the first edition of the school report cards, where schools are highlighted for their achievement and actually given a specific level. Raised expectations. You saw that come through this year with the NAPIS WKCE scores. Support for effective instruction, which is what I'm going to talk about tonight. Implementation of rigorous standards, which was the adoption of the Common Core standards in reading and math, and new assessment systems, which there are now many. The Smarter Balance was one in which a couple of our schools, Country Meadows, Lakeview, and Lake to Noon piloted this year, and those will be implemented in two years. So you can see, many things have been orchestrated in the educational landscape here in Wisconsin over the past three years, which has really positioned us now for the implementation of not only this pilot, but in two years, the Educational Effectiveness Program in place in all districts. This was their timeline. So roughly four years, 2011, 12, the beginning of the development of the framework. This year, we were, we had a voluntary pilot that the state offered to districts, and our district actually jumped in on that. 2013, 14, the pilot is a little bit different, but it's still working towards the same ends. Our district, again, will be part of that, and 2014, 15 would be the full implementation. So how we responded to this initiative? Here you can see two years at a glance. 2012, 13, I segmented, well, what you need to know is that the pilot has, or the educator effectiveness program has parts to it. There's a part that relates to the teacher, which includes what are called SLO focus, or student learning objectives, specific goals, and then there's another part called the principal focus. So there are three parts, and we took, in our involvement in this particular pilot, we segmented our team into three groups, so each group, in a sense, became experts of those particular areas. For next year, you can see the group has been expanded, there are a few more teachers a part of it, and this time, we're going to do all three parts. We're not going to segment the group. Again, the state is being thoughtful about their approach, they realize that this is a big undertaking for the state of Wisconsin and for all the school districts, so they're looking for our feedback about this initiative, and it gives them time then to make adjustments in their preparation for the full implementation in 2014, 15. So now let's do some compare and contrast. So I've set these next couple slides up as same and what will be new. So when we look at the teacher practice, things that are similar now to what the state is asking for. Structured feedback around the Danielson Framework, we're already doing that. Summit of evaluation every three years, currently that is the structure. Annual feedback through walkthroughs and classroom visits, we do that through many, we've had walkthroughs now for many years. What will be new and different will be educator effectiveness plan, which is an EEP acronym for that. So teachers setting up a specific professional goal that they'll work on over a period of time. Student learning objectives, specific goals related to student achievement, the teacher will also develop those. Evidence of professional practice and artifact collection. Much like the development of a portfolio, the teacher will begin collecting pieces of evidence that back up their growth on those particular goals. And then rating a practice with Teachscape, an electronic tool that will give teachers feedback on the Danielson domain, which also includes rating scales, levels of proficiency. So again, the new is all going to be required of all districts throughout the state of Wisconsin. For the principal, goals. They talk a lot about goals, and we have goals, we have our Eye on the Goal goals, we have professional goals related to our own 360 feedback that we give, much like, they call that like an EEP, just like it would for a teacher. Annual mid-year and end-of-year feedback we have, we meet with Dr. Thompson twice a year minimum, and sometimes more, including work samples and artifacts of things that we're currently working on that relate to Eye on the Goal, we have those. A CPR card, some sort of monitoring progress, because what the state of Wisconsin is talking a lot about in light of their goals, they use the word SMART goal, which is something that we've used for years before the Eye on the Goal process. So the CPR card is like a SMART goal in that it monitors your progress towards an outcome. And then additionally, informal visits and observations. So those are things that are currently in place in our system. What would be new is rating a practice. So similar to the teacher, you have a rubric that the superintendent or her designee would use, and actually provide feedback to the principal about their personal development on this rating scale. It would also require at least two or more professionally appointed observations, two to three informal walkthrough visits, and increased incorporation of value-added data measures, so more about the progress that your students are making at your school, and incorporating that into the whole feedback cycle. So lots of things that are already in place, and some few additions that will be added. College and career ready. So greatness is not a function of circumstances. Greatness, it turns out, is largely a matter of conscious choice and discipline. Jim Collins, Good to Grade. I looked at this quote, and I thought, this is, this really kind of epitomizes what this whole structure is really bringing, it's bringing discipline and structure to the feedback process in all districts throughout the state of Wisconsin. Ultimately, as we look at a college graduate, really bringing them to greatness, influencing teachers to continue to grow them, and ultimately, really making a difference for all kids. So brief, but hopefully gave you a broad understanding of the teacher effectiveness pilot and program that's coming in the state of Wisconsin, and that you're able to compare and contrast both the educator effectiveness program as it relates to our school district's current approaches. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you. So we'll be working as an administrative team on June 19th and 20th to develop more specific plans related to the rolling out of educator effectiveness in our system over the next few years. So more to come on that. The last item on the superintendent's report relates to an area that we want to grow in. I spoke to this the last time we met at our strategic planning update, related to parent outreach and parent involvement, with how we need to build structures so that we are including our community and our parent community in particular within our educational system so that we can better leverage student achievement and, you know, just keep us moving forward. So tonight, we have Ted Germain and Jamie, actually, is a school psychologist who is coming forward with a proposal to start with one segment within our parent population, and then that, again, we're looking to grow that along the way. So, thank you, Jamie.
So I'm just going to give Jamie just a quick introduction. I've said many times how fortunate I am to lead pupil services, the pupil services department. I mean, you couldn't ask for a harder working group of people, and so I think when you hear what Jamie wants to propose tonight, I mean, you'll see that sort of in action. You know, we certainly recognize, you know, like Kelly said, the importance of making those connections, but it's, it's a big endeavor. It's time-consuming, when, if you're do it right, you want to connect with parents when they're available, which means nights, it means weekends, and it's typically outside of the things that we would ordinarily do. So you can't imagine how delighted I was when, when Jamie came to me and said, you know, I've got this idea for a proposal, I'd like to, you know, reach out to parents. And so Jamie is a, is one of our, one of three school psychologists that we have at the elementary level, and you guys met Jamie earlier this year, she came and she talked about some of the things that she's doing with RTI at Meskego Well, actually, and she's been a leader both within our buildings as well as at a district level. So, no further ado, let Jamie talk a little bit more about her proposal.
All right, so one area, being in the schools and working with our students and then our parent population, an area of need that was identified to me was our single moms and our children from single-parent homes. And I really saw a need there that we needed to provide more supports and more programming and more, just available resources to this population within the school system. So, I mean, those of us who have been parents, we know what hard work it is, and just having that, that future, that support and that extra person to reach out and to provide those resources was something that I saw, working with the population that I do, as a need. So one of the things in putting the plan and the proposal together is, the vision for this program is that all of our families will be able to engage in meaningful learning activities that will provide them with the support, resources, and skills that they need in order to be participants in their children's education, and with the ultimate goal of increasing academic success. So the vision would be that every parent and child would learn, grow, and succeed, and would learn emotional coping strategies, would grow positive character traits, and then increase resiliency skills. And then these, by learning these skills and having these resources, the hope would be to, again, increase that academic achievement. So some of the, the proposed plan would be to have a Saturday workshop where both single moms and children from single-parent homes could come, and there would be two workshops going on simultaneously. And the children from single-parent homes would be receiving research-based interventions. So a few of those research-based interventions would be based on what the research says that population is at risk for. So some of those things would include emotional and behavioral literacy, so targeting, you know, healthy thinking, feelings, and actions. Abuse and safety prevention, school dropout, and prevention of using alcohol and drugs. Research indicates that those are some of the risk factors that population is more likely to engage in without support and intervention. On the flip side of that, the single moms' practical workshop will be, have a framework where there will be practical parenting strategies, so they'll, they will coordinate between the programs that the children are getting and receiving, which will most likely be led by pupil services staff. And those strategies will transfer over to parents so they can then have tools to implement, use the same language, and to help kids learn and generalize these skills. Also involved in that workshop, there would be a healing and hope session, and then speakers would be providing things that single moms would need, such as financial freedom, and then legal advice. And then at the end of that session, families would come together and would have a family luncheon. And again, at this, at these workshops, which would be held for, during the school year, the intent would be that it would be a year-long program, and each session would offer something different, but the framework would essentially be the same setup. And then at these, at these workshops, there will be resources available, extra supports that single moms and children from single-parent homes could take with them as follow-up. And then they would also, at that time, be able to connect with pupil service staff from their building to help, again, build that, that home-school communication piece. So I think that is pretty much a brief summary.
Well, thank you. So a question might be, you talked about single moms. Are you targeting single moms in comparison to single, you know, dads as well? Is it?
Yeah, I think, right now, we had to start somewhere in our family outreach, and this was the population that we decided to start with first, so the single moms, and then children from single-parent homes. So, and then the hope, the intent is to grow the family outreach once we have the program up and running, and then we would be incorporating, you know, single dads as well, and then really building it out to what our community is needing.
I got one briefly. Your workshops are Saturdays. What are your plans if you have a significant number of people who can't make that for work or whatever reason? Do you have another strategy to try and reach out to these parents?
That's a good, good question. I think if they, if they're not able to make any one of those four different sessions, like I said, it would, the intent would be that they would start with the programs and then finish throughout the year, but if that Saturday time is the problem, we would just have to work maybe on a individual basis, or kind of problem solve how we would make those resources available, but we would try to find another way to make that accessible to them.
How does this differ from some community-based programs that, that single parents may have access to already?
I think, I think, I haven't seen anything where the framework is essentially the same, so research looks at, okay, we know the, the things that single parents might need, and that's the setup of the, you know, the parenting strategies, and some of those things are in place now, but then that, that financial support, that legal support, you know, that healing and hope, so really getting that, that comprehensive program really all-in-one. And then at the flip side of that, that kids would actually be receiving research-based interventions based on the research at the same time. So I haven't seen where both programs are going on at the same time, and then kids are actually receiving those research-based interventions, so I think that, that brings another level.
Okay. I would, I would also add, you know, that part of the idea is to really connect parents with our staff members as well, and that would be very unique. So we have many parents who come in for everything that we hold, but then there's, there's a group of parents that, that don't, and so the idea is if we can connect with them and meet them and work with them, that they're going to be more comfortable coming to our pupil services staff if they need the support, or, and just coming in and being more of an active part of our buildings. So that's, that's really kind of a, a unique piece of it as well.
Do we have a percentage about that, how, that affects our community, our district, you know, of how, a percentage, like, how this may impact, what percentage?
You mean how many?
How big is the service need out there?
Service need, yeah. What would you say?
How many single parents are there?
Well, we know that divorce, we know the divorce rate somewhere, covers somewhere around 50%. So, I mean, it's a significant number of our students are going to come from homes where there's, where there's been a divorce. And of that, of that number, how many are, you know, live in a single-parent family situation? I don't know that we have an exact number on that.
So you're saying 50% applies to our, our community, our district, or our population?
That's, that would be a national.
A national, that was okay.
Yeah, but it's, but it's, yeah, I don't, I doubt that it would be that far in any community.
It's a suggestion, and it's, is the first. It's a suggestion, and it's, is the first thing I noticed when I looked at your slides. This is a, if you're going to do flyers and whatnot for this, to promote this, all the ladies in you have big, huge rings on them. And you're talking about single moms. It was the first thing I noticed.
Okay, appreciate that.
Is there any legal issues? This is very gender-specific. That does trouble me a little bit. There's, I know a number of single dads out there struggling with the same issues. So I understand you got to start somewhere, but also make sure that, are we going to run it? Are we, yeah, are we running into any issues with this? So have you been looking into that or?
We can certainly double-check with that. Common to target single moms, but however, we certainly don't get any.
Yeah, I mean, I would think if it was a mandated service that we were providing, that would be one thing where it could be a discrimination issue. I don't, but we can check.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good question.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It just as a follow-up, on June 10th, we have a parent advisory group that will be starting to meet, and, well, we'll be discussing other ways that parents, how we can bring parents together and support within the schools and have a, have some common goals. So that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next item is president's report. The president, I have none. Board member reports. Board member reports today. Hearing none. Committee reports. Business Services Human Resources Committee.
We did meet, we did meet this evening. Dean, myself, also in attendance was Julie Kelly and Jeremiah Johnson, and we briefly discussed the need for replacing the concrete in front of the Bay Lane, part of the Bay Lane Country Meadows building.
Is it something that's been committed to the board, or are you guys just looking forward?
I think we're just moving forward.
There's a?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is on the, yeah, you're right, it is under 13A.
All right.
It will be coming forward. Thank you.
Educational Services Committee.
We also met this evening. Mike was there, I was there, Ricky came at the tail end. We had a slew of administrators. So I'm not, they're too numerous to name, the high school administrative team, and you betcha there was everybody else there. So we had two items on our agenda. One was the high school schedule response to intervention. You have in your materials attached to the committee, the, what they termed a pilot year coming forward. So next year, response to intervention in the high school will include the focus on literacy and math. It will work its way within a student's particular schedule. It's tiered. Then the, that was, again, a pilot year, then the question became, where do we go from this perhaps the next year? So there was much discussion, predominantly from Dr. LaFleur, on some work that he and others have been doing, at looking at possibilities of opening up the high school schedule to accommodate intervention, but also flexibility for all students in their class choices. So they're looking at various schools and things like Arrowhead's flexible block scheduling, a school out of Lake Geneva. They were looking for feedback from board members. So my suggestion to Dr. Thompson was, it was worthy, since they're at the preliminary stages of their research, to bring it before the full board as they continue their journey of learning. And I think we're looking at July. So that will be coming back before the full board for discussion and hopefully some interaction. And then Abbott, A V I D overview. This is just a FYI. So again, a possible program that would go through the curriculum committee for proposal at the high school. It's an elective course that targets students at the high school who are potentials for higher learning, but perhaps are lacking some skills. So that, it was just an FYI, and will continue to be researched by high school personnel.
Thank you. Number 10, student representation. Mr. Frazier, you're on.
Hello again, Sam.
There he is. He looks very nice to me.
He looks great.
Thank you. I knew, I knew you guys were going to say that. First time.
Wow. Okay, so you were anticipating the compliment.
Yeah, Mr. Schaefer would have, would have definitely said something if he was here, but he's not here.
And maybe he will when he walks in.
Probably, probably. I didn't have the beard, so I had a shirt and a tie kind of thing going on, so, I don't know.
The contrast of shorts and sandals from last week, this is probably more.
Yeah, for sure.
You could wear that at Witty when you're there in the fall.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure I'll blend right in.
Except for the girls. I live in Witty's and guys work, I was like, we used to cut them off.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, you might not want to.
Yeah. All right, so now on to the actual report. Okay, so this weekend, the boys and girls track teams traveled to La Crosse for their state tournament. In the 100-meter dash, Xavier Jansen took second, and the four-by-eight, Zach Matusnick, Max Tesh, Andrew Saylor, Mitch, and Mitch Koopic took 10th place, and Alan Gurner took 15th place in the discus. The girls' track team took 12th place in the four-by-eight. This past weekend, the Muskego Boys tennis team also competed at the, at their WIIA individual state tournament. Max Francis and Ben Zilakowski won their first match, advanced into the second day, where they lost to Nina. Josh Taylor and Nikola Niekic became the first successful doubles team in school history to advance the final eight in state after defeating teams from Arrowhead, Manitowoc, Lincoln, and Whitefish Bay. Nikola Niekic finishes career the program's all-time wins leader with 85 individual wins. Andrej Novakovic is the Fox 6 High School Blitz Hot Shot of the Week. As you remember, Andre was awarded the Gatorade State Player of the Year this year for soccer. Congratulations to all teams.
I have a question, I'm not sure if you can answer. So Mr. Jansen took second in the 100, and it looked like he qualified for the 200, but I didn't see any results from that. Did he not compete in the finals, or did I read that wrong? Or do you not know?
I thought he competed in the finals, but I did not get that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah. Yep. That's it, so.
Thank you for all your efforts.
So this is your last report?
Yeah, it is.
And can I come back during the summer months and give us a little?
I don't know. I don't know.
Like customer baseball?
Mr. Schaefer would like it. He already expressed that to me.
Because you're welcome to.
Yeah.
You can save the name tag.
Yeah.
Who's going to be giving us reports next year?
Ryan Meskewich, who is right there.
Ah, he has a tie.
Yes, he does. I told him, I told him you guys would like that, because last, last time I didn't, and I got quicker than a cradle.
Bring him up here.
Yep, Ryan, come on up.
Sorry, is it Ryan?
Ryan, Ryan, yes.
What's your last name, Ryan?
Betschdavich.
Ryan.
We call him BZ.
Call him BZ.
Mr. Ryan. Wow, you just throw him on his back. He went from just standing in the back of the room to now he put it like a helmet on him.
He's got a tie, he's somewhat prepared.
Somewhat prepared, yeah.
Hello, Ryan.
Hello, school board members. My name is Ryan Betschdavich. I am currently a sophomore at Muskego Student, at Muskego High School, and I've been a member of the student council for, this is my second year, and so I will be a junior next year. And going through student council, I always wanted to be part of the leadership role, so this year I decided to apply for the executive board, and I was awarded the position of school board representative.
Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you.
Congratulations. Any questions?
Any questions, Ryan?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, no problem, guys. Thank you.
Come back anytime, Sam.
All right. And what a perfect transition. We're just moving on to resolution action items and.
We've got public forum.
There he is.
I can just hand off the gavel to him.
Rick, do this public forum.
Oh, all right, cool. Looks like I can pick that up.
There you go.
Actually, you can pick up the public forum. Okay. My little D12 girl.
How did you do? I didn't yell.
Your voice sounds hoarse.
All right. At this point, is public forum. This is a point in the meeting where anyone from the public can address the board on any issues. Anyone interested in coming to the board? Microphone and speaking? Going ones?
Are you going to be taking up the topic of the whole grading and?
Yes, that is, that is, that is on the agenda tonight. If you're interested in speaking, there's a card you can fill out in the back, and then you can have discussion with us when that comes up on the agenda if you're interested. If you'd rather just make a statement, you can make that now, but we can't interact with you on it. So you have two, two opportunities.
Do I have to do it now?
You can just fill, it's right there. Just fill it out now.
I mean, I'll need the opinion on how to go there.
Sure, why don't you fill out a card and just, and then give it to us, and then when that part comes up on the agenda, you can address us if you feel the need to at that point.
You can always decline to speak after we call your name, too. You're not up.
We don't require you to once you fill out a card. Anyone else? Hearing none. We're moving on to resolution action items, number 12, A, Bay Lane Principal Recommendation.
Motion to approve the appointment of Dawn Zant as Bay Lane Principal at a salary of $106,000 a year, effective July 1st, 2013, contingent upon release from current contracts.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Welcome to the board.
I'm going to come up and just share a little bit with the first one.
Thank you very much. My name is Dawn Zant, and I am actually thrilled to be here, thrilled to join the Muskego Norway School District and the Bay Lane School. I, I have come from a variety of experiences. Started my career as a teacher, as an elementary principal, and then K-12 Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Coordinator, and I'm now doing work at Alverno College and with the Department of Public Instruction on educator effectiveness. And I welcome the opportunity to become a principal, mostly because I love children, love working with the staff, and really value the relationships that can be developed at that level. And I'm just truly excited, and I want the board to know that I am a lifelong learner, and also I'm a quick learner, so I plan to find out everything I can about the Virginia trip so I can support it in the future.
Good answer. Welcome. I'm almost there, keep going. All right. Hold the favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're going to have the vote, the Chief Information Officer Recommendation.
Motion to approve the appointment of Tony Spence as Chief Information Officer for the 2013, 2013, 2014, and 2014, 2015 school years at an annual salary of $105,000, effective July 1st, 2013.
So moved.
Second. There he is, I'm like, where'd he go? Little guy can hide wherever he wants to.
Hello, everyone, again, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm looking forward and eager to get started in the process of, of continuing the change that's been happening in terms of the innovation of technology, also continue along those lines of seeing what else is out there that we can add to repertoire in the Muskego Norway School District. So, great opportunity for me. I'm currently the Director of Technology for the Reptonary School District, so I'm bringing those experiences here and looking forward to match those up with the opportunities that exist in the Muskego Norway. So I've started my career as a teacher as well, so I'm coming from that background as well, but bringing the unique side of technology, too. So, like Dawn, though, I'm not a quick learner, so I take a little, no, I'm just kidding. I try. And ultimately, if I can, if I can add the excitement of, of being able to come into a system that there are already things in, in great condition, that makes my job a lot easier so we can move forward innovative, rather than trying to backpedal from previous, I guess, we'll call it, any issues that we have in the area of technology. So I know that things are very strong here, and I'm continuing that process moving forward.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You go. All right. Any more discussion? If not, all right.
I was, I just want to say, first, I just, I just met Tony prior to this meeting, and I was not part of the post-session discussions. I missed that meeting then for contractual reasons and stuff like that, so that's why I will be, my vote would be on a stay on this vote, which definitely part of that question.
All right. Any other discussion? Hold those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries with one abstention. Thank you, congratulations, welcome.
Welcome.
Next up, under the core strategy of enhancing teaching and learning, Math Pilot Update and Resource K5 Recommendation.
Motion to approve stepping stones or IGO as presented. Who are IGO? Orig.
Orig.
Orig. Thank you.
I don't know. I guess.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Dawn, anything we'd like to add?
No, and, I mean, really, it's the recommendation that we discussed at the last meeting, moving forward with stepping stones and really intensive professional development for our teachers in terms of looking at those instructional strategies, so making it as much about the teacher craft and their instructional decisions as it is about the resource.
Dawn, it's been a little bit while, can you just give a 30-second overview of what the stepping stones, origin, origo?
Sure. It is a K5 resource that is aligned with the Common Core. It is an electronic subscription, so it's a little bit different than the resources we've had in the past. Teachers are able to access their teacher guide and lesson plans from anywhere, from home, from school, but it does come with a comprehensive resource of student resource journals and ongoing practice books, so there is that, that paper pencil piece that the students will experience. But then there is also a technology component. Within each lesson, it embeds, there's kind of two components. I've shared a little bit about the Common Core state standards for math and some of the ships along the way, but one of those is that there's a really strong content piece to our Common Core, and then there's also what we call our math practices. And the math practices are about our students being good mathematicians and understanding the processes of learning mathematics. And so one of the reasons we liked this program was that it embeds both of those components in it. So for those reasons, we feel like it would be a good, a good starting point for us.
Thank you.
Dawn, we may have touched on this two weeks ago, and I apologize if we don't recall. In the, the survey information that you gave, while many of the items scored out very highly, there were some that did not score out that highly?
Yes.
I guess I would just like you to speak to, to that, why they didn't score out so highly.
Sure. One of the design features of stepping stones is, again, that online resource tool and the online, what they would call their staticware, and some of the, much like with an iPod or an iPad, you can develop a playlist, and so every lesson has a playlist. One of the things that teachers had some time getting oriented and familiar with was the actual instructional delivery. And so some of the things that you see come out a little bit lower had to do with instruction, and so that's why instructional strategies and approach. So while all the resources are there, it's a matter of making decisions about, there's a lot there. And so some were having difficulty, one of the issues, I guess, one of the concerns was how to fit it all in. And so we are bringing in that professional developer in August, and, like I said, making it more than just about the content that's provided within the resource, but actually those instructional planning decisions and kind of the craft of instruction, being really in the, in the teacher's hands in addition to what's provided in the tool, because there's, there's a variety of things provided in the tool for whole-class instruction. And so we are bringing in that professional developer in August and, like I said, making it more than just about the content that's provided within the resource, but actually those instructional planning decisions and kind of the craft of instruction being really in the teacher's hands in addition to what's provided in the tool. Because there's a variety of things provided in the tool for whole-class instruction and differentiation at different levels. So again, there's a learning curve that will be going into this.
Dawn, a quick question. I missed that discussion. I apologize. This is a pilot. We're starting off in grades.
K?
K-2, because I see K-2 and then I see 3 through 5.
Yes. It's a, we are moving to implementation in K through 2. And then 3 through 5 didn't have an opportunity to pilot yet because it is a new program. It will be available for 3 through 5 to pilot in fall. We had an opportunity to do some initial training and orientation to it for our 3 through 5 teachers. But we didn't feel comfortable making a recommendation K through 5 without 3 through 5 having the opportunity to pilot it. So with a two-year proposal, because it is an annual subscription that you're renewing, that would give us time to try out the grades 3 through 5 and then monitor the success of K through 2 and make decisions about full implementation moving forward.
Next question. From an administrator district standpoint, what would you expect us to see down the road in your system? From an administrator?
That is a great question. And one, what we really hope is our math program review spent the year, as you know, we shared with you the vision that we had developed around mathematics and that being every student being mathematically proficient, along with a list of belief statements around what our students would be able to do mathematically, thinking mathematically, understanding of the math Common Core content, and in addition, those math practices, which really speaks to them as mathematicians and the way they go about learning math and solving problems. So how would we measure that? In my proposal, I just put, we would expect, and you will be watching, to see greater success on our common assessments, on our, the three things that I have here, on that discovery education assessment that we'll be using. That's directly aligned with the Common Core. And then ultimately, smarter balance is where we want to see students be successful. And one of the reasons that we went with stepping stones is because it really was designed around the Common Core, not revised to match the Common Core, which is a slight difference. It really was built around the robust content of the Common Core. And so we hope to see, we plan to see students successful on those assessments.
Okay, now, from a parent's standpoint of elementary students, from parent's perspective, what have you seen during the skinny, flat singles? Do you? And will they be able to understand and help their child? It seems odd at an elementary level, but sometimes it can be the language and stuff. Will there be a communication where the parents can assist and easy access to understanding methodology and consistency?
Yes, we sure hope so. The feedback from parents during the pilot was positive about the communication aspect of the stepping stone materials. One of the things is the parent communications that are embedded within the, what they call modules or units of study within the courses. So there is that parent communication component. But then the practice pages and the student journal models and limits what was covered in class. And so when those go home, it provides kind of a background of what the students have done learning. At least that's what we experienced so far during the pilot.
And like with other things, too, I hope we get some follow-up feedback from two of the positives and negatives that might come from, you know, because a lot of times, as a board, I think we say we don't always want to hear all the, you know, if there is some, you know, kind of like that exit interview or, you know, things that, you know, share with us that.
Well, and truthfully, that's why I put in all the survey results. I wanted you to see, you know, we recognize there were some real, the solid strengths around what we liked about the program, the alignment to the Common Core and the assessment. And, you know, some of those things were really strong and wanted us to move forward. But there are those other areas that we are going to watch and really monitor and provide staff development to hopefully address those.
Other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on then to the next item is, under the core strategy, providing quality leadership and enhancing teaching and learning, the grading recommendations.
Motion to approve the grading recommendations as presented.
So moved.
There a second? Second. All right. Discussion.
So in front of you today is a summary of the last four. So we've had two board discussions, and last week we had a board work session on May 28. And at that board work session, the board had shared some further suggested revisions to, two areas really, which were the timeline and the educator guidebook. So in front of you today in hard copy are those items. So the recommendations we had already brought to you with the revisions, so there's a copy of those there. I'm sorry, there's no page numbers on the documents. The third page would be, again, you expressed it, moving from a three-year timeline to a five-year timeline. So there's a five-year timeline there. Some highlights I'd like to point out for you would be that in the fifth year, that is when the transcript would then reflect the non-academic factors. So you would take five years to transition that to the transcript. That teachers would start using 4-3-2-1-0s in 2014, 15. That the high school would remain using the letter grades in the gradebook and obviously on the transcript. Once it's in the gradebook, that way it stays that way on the transcript. So that wouldn't change in the timeline because we aren't asking for that revision. Made some tweaks as to when things would happen. So for example, the elementary report card would be done first, and then we would move to the middle and high school revisions two years later so that the new report card at the middle and high school would be four years out. I think that was it for the major changes, just kind of shifting things a little bit along the way. We did get feedback certainly from the Grading for Learning team. You know, that committee has parents, students, and teachers on it, as well as other administrators. And the feedback really was certainly everyone appreciates an extended timeline. But you'll see that the asterisk is at the bottom. That reflects two things. One, that any timeline should always be fluid in terms of where a system is at. So two years down the road, if something needs to be tweaked on the timeline, the timeline should be able to be fluid that way. And the second is that there's certainly continually received feedback on pending action, that certainly this is a five-year timeline, but there are folks who are already well along their journey and are already in years four and five in their own practice and want to be able to continue to do that good practice with students. And that anyone who's wherever they are in the timeline should be able to implement those pieces whenever their readiness, their department or grade level readiness is there. So if that's 14, 15, or 13, 14, however, what this timeline states is that everyone will be on board in the 16, 17, 17, 18 school years. The next page is the, also includes the community information timeline. How will we do the education of parents, and that includes students, starting with the what, why, and when? Why would we be doing grading for learning in the Mesquite Go-Norway schools? And then taking them all, parents and students, all the way out to 2017, 18 as we review the retake policy and the non-academic factors that are going to be reported on the transcript. So each year, it highlights kind of the changes based on the implementation timeline that you saw in the first page. The next couple of pages, the Grading for Learning members, I want to publicly thank them. They do consistent feedback via email, just given short timelines. And certainly, this is a crazy busy time of year for them in classrooms with assessing and report cards. And again, to the parents who also provide feedback, we made some tweaks based on some of your recommendations last week that you wanted to see a little bit tighter in here. But again, this guidebook, it gives you a broad overview. The detail of the guidebook will be put into place as the recommendations are approved. But a couple of highlights within here, you had asked about the zero and how it related to the missing or the incomplete. And so it is stated in here. At almost the very end of the other educator guidelines section, it says, "A score of a zero will not be assigned to assumptive assessments that are not completed by the due date. Teachers will enter the M for missing until the reporting period closes." Should that assumptive assessment not be submitted, turned in, et cetera, it does turn to a zero in the gradebook and essentially then on the report card and in the transcript. Then we also included the two rubrics with the revisions, as well as the correlation to the letter grades for the high school, and a little bit further description on the life skills rubric, the purpose of it, how it would be reported, and when and how it would be on the transcript. So we just kind of condensed that for you into the guidebook because that's how it would be used with students and the student handbooks. And then certainly teachers, as we roll out the professional development and the information sessions and the information timeline.
Discussion. Before we jump into that, let me just say, so far I've got one card. Just from a method of operation standpoint, what we'll do is probably have some board discussion before I would go to the cards. And then you can decide if you want to or pass. If anybody else, committee members, will probably interact with the board. But if there's anybody else that's not a committee member, we'd just ask you to fill out a card like this one. Makes sense? Okay. Discussion, questions?
Tammy, on the revised timeline, going from three years to the five-year timeline that we discussed last meeting, several items in that first year, the 2013-14, several of those items involve time, collaboration, discussion, and working through the recommendations and reworking the guidebook. Almost every one of these bullet points involves some sort of time on the teacher's behalf and some sort of collaboration. Where's that time come from?
Great question. So we have 90 minutes every other week or 45 minutes all week for teacher collaboration. We also have the collaboration professional workdays throughout the year that we're already defining on what parts of the KPO we built in that. Dawn just actually finished revising that calendar and what's embedded in that calendar on the days of the year next year that would be focused on these kinds of tasks. Some of that work, for example, the guidebook, would also be the committee work outside of timeline they did this year. Committee members, these have subcommittee pieces that would get some of that work done. It's dependent, you know, again, not everything is for each grade level or each building level. So not everyone would be involved in everything on that list. So it's dependent on currently, A, what your role is in the system, what level you teach at, and who you are if you're a committee member or not.
Does that time, though, that they're going to be devoting to the grading come at the expense of something else?
Well, it's essentially what collaboration is for. Collaboration is really meant for teachers to work on policy implementation, assessment development, iterative reliability. All of those are inherent in here. So without a sound, consistent grading system, all of those things we might do as a grade level, but then go back out and grade it all separately. And then our work is no longer consistent. And so this brings consistency to that. Is it work on top of what they're already working on? Yes, because that's essentially how a KPO works. When the new KPOs come out and out of that comes in an implementation, it does, it probably makes the work more coherent. So again, many of the things, I'll use the example of common assessment development that both Lisa Saffago and Dawn will be leading next year. That is already an expectation for next year's work, and that's directly aligned to the grading recommendation. So regardless of the grading recommendation, the common assessment development will be going on. So that's kind of already embedded in here, but it's already part of the expectation for next year.
The last bullet point, in 2013-14, teachers begin to grade and implement rubrics every 4-3-2-1-0 grading. Which teachers?
Oh, that's beginning to create, using generally, getting familiar with, getting kids familiar with. And we have that going on right now, K through 12. So again, when I talked about teachers who don't want to have to move away from that, we've got a really large portion, quite frankly, in particular, the middle schools, who are already in that system. And some of the board members that are already spoken to, their children are experiencing that. So for some, it won't be new. And this just talks about beginning to create and implement.
Any questions and discussion? That's more than I don't want to. Keep going.
Keep going.
Sure. Got to warm everybody up.
There was, I think, when we started this, we all agreed that there was some issues that needed to be addressed. And mainly, it was the inconsistencies across teacher-to-teacher classroom, one math teacher to one math teacher, one building to another building, inconsistencies with regards to grading, retake policies, extra credit, homework, all of those inconsistencies. And we all agreed on that. With that, why does it take three years to address those inconsistencies? You know, and in 13-14, we have extra credit will no longer be calculated in grade. Then in 14-15, we have, at the secondary level, they're going to implement a standard retake policy. And then in 15-16, it says all teachers will implement a homework policy that indicates the difference between formative. So we all agree that there's like, these three bullet items need to be addressed. Why does it take three years to get to those? Why can't we just make those adjustments right away and work on everything else and fine-tune everything else after that?
What I heard and the committee heard was that the board was not in favor of putting everything early in the front end of the timeline. And so we built a timeline that impacted teachers not so heavily in year one. And so retake policies, extra credit, homework. The committee did essentially consider all of those in year one and then kept getting feedback that that wasn't a good method to take, that people wanted to enter this process slowly. We wanted to be responsive to certain levels who, in particular, maybe needed more slowly. So that's essentially why you have it here, that we heard from the board that you wanted us to stagger the timeline. And so that's why it's placed where it is. Is there a rhyme or reason to which one comes first? A little bit. We feel like extra credit, absolutely, can be done in year one. It's a statement we're making that it's essential. It's not a good practice. It's not good for kids, quite frankly. And the other ones do take some adjustments. So retake policies are not in everyone's repertoire, or not consistently in everyone's repertoire. Homework policies vary greatly. But to change a policy without some understanding is also essential. So built within this is, we would learn about formative and summative assessments before we drastically change a homework policy. And so it's staggered based on the learning piece and then implementation.
Anybody else? I guess I'll go. So I'm back to the page two, right, the actual recommendations. So back to the first page, the revised recommendations. And there's, from my perspective, there's some of this that I really, really like. First and foremost, it's a lot of collaborative great work by a lot of educators that are passionate about this that I really respect. And I really like point one, standards-based, you know, the themes of consistency across the system. I really like in number two. I really like number two, communicating to the students exactly what we expect them to learn. I really like meaningful, timely, and specific feedback. And number three, and number four, I really like that, you know, the guidebook's reflecting achievement of the standards. These are all kind of no brainers to me, right? These are like, wow, this is a best practice of a district that's going to be a district of choice. I'm really hung up on five and six, which, for those that are following along at home, is the 4-3-2-1-0 part. Whether you translate 4-3-2-1-0 to an A, B, C, D, or leave it at 4-3-2-1-0, I'm just hung up there. So I'm going to put that aside for a minute and keep going. The idea that, you know, you've got to complete your summative assessments, put them on a final grade, I'm good. Multiple opportunities, retakes, I think with the proper structure around it, that's okay. The idea of just retake it till you pass it doesn't bode for me, but some structure around it, you know, I think is okay. And then you get into this section in here of, I'm going to skip nine, which is the non-academic factors being reported separately. But 10 and 11, to me, is, I think, maybe similar to what kind of what Jim was suggesting, is for things like homework and things like extra credit, I think we could achieve some consistency within a department. I mean, the idea of homework having an impact on your grade is different in math, maybe, than it is in another subject.
What?
Social studies, which was my favorite subject. But not because of homework.
Which is why you became a banker, right?
Something like that. That's just because I wasn't a good man. So, I mean, I think we could strive for consistency in areas like that from within a department, necessarily. I think that's hard to implement something there that's consistent across the system with such variety in what we're teaching, math to social studies to English to science, to some of the specialties. I completely agree on the extra credit piece, that extra credit for bringing in a box of Kleenexes is a little bit ridiculous. Extra credit for something that is academically related to the topic you're studying, you know, I think it can be appropriate, is used appropriately. And I like number 12 on incompletes and missing work. So my hangups are five, six, nine, 10, 11. 10 and 11, I think, like I said, we can work with, with some tweaking. And that's, again, the homework and extra credit piece. But I just can't support five, six, and nine. Those are something I'm not ready to support. I'm not sure that our community is ready to support. I have two kids in the middle school. I'm not a fan of 4-3-2-1 grading in the middle school as a parent. I don't like it. I don't think it tells me enough, and I don't think, I don't think it pushes my kids enough, personally, because there's a little difference between a three and a four. There's a lot of difference between a 100 and an 80. I don't think it pushes the kids hard enough, personal experience. So that wasn't even a question I just talked. But you can address it, certainly, that's kind of where I'm sitting for that.
Actually, before you do that, I have a question for Jim.
Yes, sir.
For discussion first. You know, I'm actually almost on the same level you're at. I don't have as much of an issue with 4-3-2-1 for the individual assessments throughout the year, the final. At the end, I think it should be broken out into something more intensively, but how we grade assignments and projects, the 4-3-2-1, I could live with. My, one of the issues I had, and I said earlier on, and it addresses on number 12, where it says an incomplete will be placed in the gradebook for any incomplete work or missing, or an M for any missing. Yeah, I'm okay with that, but I also don't want something turned in three weeks past the due date to get the same credit as the person who took it out of time. I think that's one of those that we need to, to have some guidelines, kind of like what you were talking about with the multiple opportunities. I don't want, I'm not comfortable people take the same exam eight times. I know our goal is to get the students to learn the material.
Right.
And that is important, but there's also, I think we should be assessing students differently that get the material right away than the ones that take longer, because it's a true indication, yeah, they may have that same information at the end, but, you know, if you're picking teams, you're saying, you know, you want to be able to identify which ones are the quicker learners. These schools, I know universities would like to know that information.
Yeah, and so I, was that a question?
No.
I'm just making sure. Hey, I don't disagree with you from that perspective. I just, I would like to see us, I think, take a step where we say, "Let's be really good at 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, maybe mess around a little bit with those other ones before we make what I believe is a major, significant change for something that some of you are going to disagree with me." But I don't think it's that. I think if we were standards-based, and we said to it, we said, "This is what it takes to get a grade, whether it's a 4-3-2-1 or a zero to 100 scale. This is what it takes. This is what we expect you to learn, and we're going to give you good feedback, specific feedback." But we're hitting on a lot of cylinders that maybe not a lot of school districts are, but all should be, right? I think all should be doing those things. All districts should be giving students meaningful, timely, specific feedback. All students should be communicating what you're expected to learn. All districts, I should say, did I say that right? But, so anyway, I'll stop there.
Actually, the one thing I might disagree with you about the 4-3-2-1, I don't know that it wouldn't push the kids, but it is going to take a pretty big shift in thinking for the students and the parents, as opposed to what we currently use in most of the classes that I'm experienced with, is still, you know, the percentage, 80%, 90%, 100%. So I think that's going to be a real big shift, and we may need to step into that somehow. Maybe you take the exam, you know you've got 80%, and that translates to a 3.2 in the grading scale. That may take some time to get parents and students thinking in that regard. We may need, like you said, we may need to tweak that to get us there, if that's the direction we want to head ultimately. As far as the homework, I am glad to see that, under one of your points, that evidence for retake must be demonstrated, which includes homework or whatever else that I read where the department would come up with the guidelines, the policies for that. I am glad to see that's in there. I'm still worried, like Rick said, you know, you have due dates and you have deadlines. And my biggest concern is, if you push off enough due dates and deadlines, you're not going to be able to manage your time properly. And I hate to see a kid get into that situation. I think at some point, we're going to, you know, they're going to have to say, it is going to be a hard and fast deadline for the assignment, for the assessment, at some point. It's, you know, being able to retake it through the whole semester, that's one of the things that's got me nervous, because I know there's students like myself who get two and three weeks behind, and all of a sudden, the class is way over here, and I might be struggling to catch up way back in fourth and fifth grade. So, and it wasn't the fact that I wasn't learning, it's that I wasn't working at learning. So that's got me a little bit concerned. Since we are, our motto is, "Every student learning, growing, succeeding," I really think the emphasis has to be on getting a lot of this done when it's due. Like Rick said, I don't know how we separate that, other than in the non-academic factors or life skills that says the student gets his work in on time or early or whatever. But I don't know how well that reflects, you know, on future teachers and then moving the kids on into postgraduate careers, you know, in university and in technical colleges. So I don't know if we've got that quite tweaked to the point we need it. I know it's hard to get that emphasis in there based off what I'm reading here. So what I do like is, yes, extra credit, that really shouldn't be an emphasis on it. It's basically extra credit, if you're doing it right, is demonstrating that you've mastered it, or you're making up to show that you've done the work. So in a sense, it's really similar to retake. So I do like that. And I do actually like that we are demonstrating to the students and the parents and anybody else who has the need to know the individual life skills that the student has. I know it's beneficial for me knowing that, you know, my daughters, one of my daughters may need a little work on this, and we can work with her throughout the year to maybe turn in her work timely, in a more timely manner, or that she needs to keep her desk cleaner, which I heard a lot of in third and fourth grade. But I like that those, some of that is separate. And I do think some of that needs to be involved with the grading, because it does relate very closely. How exactly, again, I don't think we're quite there, but there are some things I do like about the proposal and some things I do still have some concerns with, so.
I don't know, you know, there was a lot in there.
Yeah, I know. I just dabbled there.
And I can certainly beat a dead horse, which I am not going to do. I'll just say a few things. The purpose for grading is one thing, and that is to give information on the attainment of standards. That is the purpose for grading. When you do that in a system, when you shared that you're all for consistency in practices, but in a system that is point accumulation and not on attainment of standards, we send a message that it's about chasing a score. It's not about meeting that standard. So if a standard is, can write a persuasive essay that includes X, Y, and Z, and I have points to show that I turn things in, I haven't really, I haven't necessarily demonstrated that I can write a persuasive essay with X, Y, and Z. It just doesn't do that. So our message, our message as a system to the community members and to students and to teachers right now is a system we all lived under. All of us experienced point accumulation. All of us experienced what it felt like to get an F, what it felt like to get an A. But we, as educators and very responsible administrators, also recognize that we have students, I will share this with you again, we have many, many students who are advanced on the WKCE but are failing in our schools. It is not an accurate reflection of their standard attainment. It is not. And the opposite occurs. Students who are minimal and basic on our WKCE and on our map are getting As and B pluses in our system. So if they cannot demonstrate that they've achieved a standard, but we will assign them a letter grade that says they have met a standard, we aren't being truthful. And so this KPO, the many, many hours of the committee, was really, this isn't new research. This isn't a new fly-by-night initiative in the state of Wisconsin or in the nation, quite frankly. It really is about schools doing a better, responsible job about communicating to parents and to their individual students, "You have met a standard, and here's what it means to meet that standard." And that is what this is about. First and foremost, it is about consistency. So I don't need to talk about that one. I think we all agree on ensuring that. Jim, one of the things you mentioned about your own personal experience, and certainly we can validate and find value in your personal experiences, we also know, because we've got committee members on, teachers who are on the committee who are currently doing 4-3-2-1, and would say, "But we aren't consistent because we haven't had the in-depth training. We haven't sat down to talk about what information are we giving when we give a three." So you might be experiencing a little bit of that in grade levels, where trying to stay, trying to do consistent things without a lot of background and a lot of training. And with that timeline and the professional development, teachers will be in a very different place after they've actually had discussions about, "What does it mean to give a three?" I've sat in parent meetings, and I couldn't support the teacher in their 4-3-2-1 because it was about the communication about what it meant. I also had an example of a teacher this week who said, "The beginning of the year, we had our grade level meeting about what consistent grading practice we were going to put in place." And we all agreed, but in my heart, I realized, I wasn't in agreement with my committee, but it would have been a battle to fight it, so I kind of do my own thing. And we've had that for years in education. I was part of classroom teachers that did that, and we don't want to do that anymore. But we also have lots and lots of teachers who believe in standards-based grading, and without that, we're asking them to grade in a system that becomes point chasing, and they're not comfortable with that. So when we talk about constituents, that population is also constituent about, how do we really give information to kids about what really matters? So I don't know what I'm hearing in that in terms of where you want to go with action. I can continue to say the committee feels very strongly about all 12, and when you remove five or six, or you remove nine, 10, or 11, it does impact the general notion of what standards-based grading is when you start to tweak those. So I caution us to think that just by removing a five or a six and getting consistency in some practices, we just need to be clear, we are not standards-based that if we choose to do that. We might be improving some day-to-day instructional practices, but we are not a standards-based district if we choose to call that out. I don't know if committee members, if you had anything else you wanted to, that puts you in a tough spot a little bit.
Tammy, do me a question, Mary. What other districts or systems are used in this, this, through a K-12's grading?
Every single district that touches us, physically touches them, Muskego and Norway, has elements of standards-based grading already in place, whether it's K-8, or it's 1-6, or it's K-12. So Waukesha, Wauatosa, Franklin, New Berlin.
Has anyone, has anyone done something close to what you're talking about doing, or in system-wide? I mean, this?
K-12, system-wide, standards-based, yes. New Berlin is one of them. Waukesha is one of them. They're all, they're doing what we have here. They're translating, they're translating 4-3-2-1 to letter grades.
They are, but they're doing translation then.
They're doing translation, which is our recommendation.
What about some of the districts that we tend to look at when we benchmark, let's say, Hamilton, Calmarie, Arrowhead, Elm Brook?
So Calmarie is standards-based, they translate to letter grades. Elm Brook is starting their, I can only speak to that only because of the transition I'm in. Who is the third one you mentioned? Hamilton is embarking on it now and asking me for my materials. They, I believe they're already doing it at elementary, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak to them.
And they're, are all of them, to your knowledge, are best you can answer, are used? At some point, I think, the term is, is how this translates when you get to high school, transcriptually, get to a transcript.
It doesn't change anything about our transcripts. Your transcript would still look essentially identical.
I mean, but with the conversion or the, I mean, are the other districts, are you allowed to have the same thing?
Yeah, yeah. With the inclusion, like Asuns Prairie, they call theirs the contribution grade, which is the arnomic and a factor of life skills. West Toshia has their contribution grades in there. And again, that's in year five of our plan.
I think, like many others or others on here, you know, there's aspects of this I really agree and can get my hands around when you read them. There's some, and it's, you know, I'm making the old-school stubbornness, and I think, you know, and, you know, like the homework uses preparation, practice will be risk-free, not graded. What is the, I mean, what's the chance that we'll ever get done? You know, you're going to go, you know, I just go see a kid, you know, it's practicing, I really don't have to do it. And so then how is that, you know, is the instructor, teacher supposed to just disregard that? Or does that show then up on the assessments, and then does that trickle down and equate to that student now having to take some, you know, retakes or more retakes? It's just, there's a lot of...
So first, we have to acknowledge that that happens now. We have kids who don't do any homework, they just don't, right? And you could say that that's partly teacher's, absolutely, it's a teacher's responsibility to ensure that there's students, A, see value and importance in the assignment, they really do, and see that it's connected to the assessment at some point. Because in a system currently, right now, this system builds in a lot more student Because in a system currently, right now, this system builds in a lot more student ownership of their learning versus a traditional grading system. So that's one significant difference. Now, will you have students who say, I'm not going to do that, I don't think I need that for the assessment? Sure. In a standards-based system, if the, that's called formative assessment, when they participate in the summative assessments, kind of the big projects, the big, and they do fine, they know, they know the material. And our ultimate goal is to say, yeah, I've got the evidence that says you know the material, and your grade should match that. Whether you turned in 1,000 multiplication problems, or you did 100 to prepare yourself for that assessment, you know how to do it. The teacher will always, whether you do a traditional grading system or a standards-based grading system, the teacher matters. You know, Alan Grove put up the quote, that the biggest factor in student achievement is the teacher, and the teacher's ability to engage kids, to see things as purposeful. And will you always have students, even in this, we are not here to say, you won't have students say, I'm going to turn that in. Okay, so those are practice and preparation. Those are those, I learned it at two o'clock today, and they're practicing tonight. Those aren't the, two weeks from now, you're going to turn in that persuasive essay. That is an assignment that is graded. You've had multiple experience, opportunities for feedback, you've shown me a couple of drafts, I'm going to grade that. That's different than, practice these 20 problems, or these 14 spelling words tonight, and then come back tomorrow and have it mastered. None of us, you know, we talk about pacing. It's not true that people don't learn at different rates. The brain research has proved that, that we all learn differently, and we learn at different times. And our current system penalizes folks that if I learn it in March and you learn it in June, that somehow makes it harder or better than me, or vice versa. That's simply not true. In a current system, if we put our system on that time is the constant, and learning is the variable, we flip that around, that's a much better system for kids. But this is, does not say, give them all the time they want, don't collect things, there's nothing in here that says that. Quite frankly, we believe it's the opposite, because if it's truly about standard-based, they have to be giving you evidence. And when the evidence isn't there, they're going to get the zero.
Yeah, but Tammy, I mean, and actually, that's where my big gripe is on this whole thing, is it seems like we're watering down accountability and prepared, prepared of this that they will have to go into the real world. Because if you don't make deadlines count, and that first test count, this, I'm fearful of the, not only student, but what kind of citizen we're going to be putting out there that just has in the back of their mind, well, if I don't do it right the first time, I can always do it later. Sometimes the first time counts, and it should. And that's my, that's one of my biggest fears out there. The 4-3-2-1, quite honestly, I wouldn't have any issue with that at all if it wasn't that fear of when they leave high school, our transcripts look so much different than everywhere else, regardless of what kind of pervert we have in there for admissions counselors. My fear is our kids would be penalized later in life because, to get into schools, because ours do look different than the norm out there. That's my fear on that. But my biggest, my biggest gripe on this whole thing is, it seems like we're watering down accountability, and...
And I'm sorry if my comments haven't helped you, we feel it's, we do feel it's the opposite.
And I just don't, they don't help me on that. I mean, I could almost live with part of that, you know, homework disencounter, they, you know, if they first earned it. You know, in a perfect world where, let's just say, for the first quarter, everyone has to do their homework, or first, you know, five weeks, and on that first test, the kids that got all, you know, got their fours on their assessment, maybe even threes, threes or fours, okay, now, you're not responsible to turn in your homework, you still probably should be doing it, because you're not going to get those grades without it. And if their grades drop again, they got to go back into it. You could maybe tell me on that, but it's earned at that point. They've shown the responsibility to be able to do that work on their own, and realize that if I do A, B happens. Because essentially, that's what we're saying. We're telling these students, you're telling us that the kids are going to learn that they're going to have to do an appropriate amount of homework, or work at home to learn, to learn the material. And if they don't do it, they're not going to, they're not going to do well on the assessments. We're banking on that. Well, I'm sorry, I just, I just don't trust our children enough, I'll say it, to do that. They're kids, they still need our guidance, they still need our prodding.
They may need to trust our teachers, which...
Exactly. But it's not the teachers I'm talking about, I'm talking about my, in this case, my 15-year-old freshman, who, if I'm not on him to do his work, doesn't get done.
Well, we shift the thinking, and we don't have 300 educators making different decisions for kids, and we get people on the same path, talking the same language. Adults do hold kids accountable, I mean, kids know that seven periods of their day, this is the message I'm getting, I'm going to respond differently. Right now, I get to go to you, and I get away with this, I go to you...
Well, I mean, with consistency, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the retakes.
But I'm talking about the homework consistency. I also want to address, Rick, you brought up the real-life perspective, so I'll give you an example. I have to use my own context, because I'm in the real world. I've gone through, I've gone through. So I have, I have to be proficient in Google Docs. That is my responsibility in this current role in this system. Kelly Thompson did not say yesterday, I'm going to give you this 10-minute tutorial on Google Docs, and you have to be proficient tomorrow, and I'm going to put it in your evaluation, how proficient you are. That would never happen in the real world. It doesn't happen.
But you're also, you're also the individual of what we're all counting on everyone being. You've succeeded, you're accomplished in life, you've gotten to that level because you have that, that, that work ethic, let's just say.
But we're talking, no, but we're talking about learning a new skill. A new skill is being able to use a Google Doc. I have time, I've, you know any mistakes I've made, I've lost things, I shared it with the wrong person. I'm doing stuff in Google Docs, and I'm experiencing failure, and I'm experiencing success because I get practice in it. No one is penalizing me every time I make a mistake because I'm learning Google Docs. And I have time to do that. At some point, is Dr. Thompson going to expect that I am a proficient, absolutely. But we, Dawn learns it at a different rate than I do. The expectation is, my standard is, I use Google Docs proficiently. And I'm certainly not an expert at it. Am I probably close to proficient if Bob Boyd were here in the assessment? Probably, but it's taken me time to do that, and it's no different in the classroom. If I'm learning multi-digit addition, or I'm learning binomial, whatever it is, I can't learn it today. And then if someone say to me, you're not proficient enough because you didn't show me enough evidence, that's not how the brain works, it's not how, we're not trying to produce widgets, we're trying to produce what you've all described. Students who, A, own their own learning, B, recognize the importance of responsibility and practicing at home so that they get good at the Google Docs, C, that they can acknowledge, wow, I'm proficient in this, or, C, I'm exceeding in this, and here's what I did with Google Docs, which I haven't been able to do at Dr. Thompson, hey, look what I can do now. That would be the exceeding, if I took it well above what she expects of me. It is, and I acknowledge, it is a shift for all of us. If you thought I was graded in a standards-based grading environment in Catholic schools in the 1970s, it wasn't happening. But I know more now, I want to do better now, and so do the educators in our system. And I want us to send the message, yeah, we want all of you to do better, and we're also going to give you a timeline for you to learn how to do that really well, and we're also going to say to our students, you have significant responsibility in your learning. And you always have, but it's been a point accumulation. Now it's about, to show me you know the standard, here are all of the things you're going to have to do that's evident.
I think part of it's semantics, and maybe it's just an idea, an idealism of what, what your thoughts are on things. Because you have used the word penalized throughout this whole presentation, beginning on, and I don't necessarily think you're penalizing a student because you didn't give him an A. You're penalizing if you give them an F, but just because they didn't get the top of the, you know, the top of the scale, doesn't mean that they're being penalized. They're being, they're being penalized if they really earned a B, and they got a C, that'd be penalizing them. But just because they didn't get the A, because they didn't learn it as quickly or as completely as another student, I don't think that is penalizing them. It's assessing them, that's what we do.
Yeah, to that point, I think my question was coming more, you said, what's the difference that the student, you know, learned it in March or till June? My concern would be then, what about the other students that learned it in March? What happens to them till June? You know, are they being...
Well, that happens now too, that's where it's...
Well, there's a lot of things that happen now. I think we're all agree, there's a lot of things that happen now, that inconsistencies in that, that we don't agree with, or we agree that needs to be addressed or changed.
So Mike Sarah is a fourth-grade teacher, and she probably has students who are at a Level M, and she has students who are at Level J, and she has students at Level S. She is not teaching to the M's. She's teaching the J's where they need to be and moving them. She's teaching the M's, talking book levels, for people who are wondering what I'm talking about, teaching to the M's and moving them. We don't, we don't tell all of her students, you all have to be an M right now because that's where I'm going to teach, because that's where you all should be at this grade. We don't teach like that. We take them all however they come in, and we move them all. Do they all even end up at the same? They don't, they really don't. And I'll use kindergarten as that example. We've got kids, and you've heard me say this, who don't know a letter in their name, and we've got kids who are getting a secondary level. And for me to say to the kindergarten teachers, don't worry about these kids over here, teach to these kids, we don't do that. So we also shouldn't grade that way, that you get graded based on when you've learned it, that certainly would be, quite frankly, that would be unethical.
I think we're just being careful not to penalize a student arbitrarily.
Sarah, can you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Sarah Miller, thank you, fourth grade. I had a couple comments in my head. One of them was going back to the non-academic factors and the concerns with the due dates and the deadlines. And I think one thing that we want to be careful is not penalizing them arbitrarily. Our goal is to make sure that they've learned the information, however it takes them to get there. I think some of, some educators right now, when we're factoring in if they turned it in on time, we would take it, some take it personally and want to, we saw in various syllabi knock off 10% per day that it's late. And that's more of us taking it personally that they turned it in late, so we're going to knock off points. Whether they, they might have done an even better job on it than the person who turned it in on time, but I'm just penalizing them because how dare they turn it in late. And sometimes we let those personal feelings into our grading when we shouldn't. So I think having that policy will erase all of that and make it very black and white. Did they learn it? How did they learn it? Where on that 4-3-2-1-0 scale they come from? Another thing I wanted to share was just a little vignette that happened just this week. I have those fourth graders transitioning to the middle school, and several parents have asked me, when possible, to put letter grades on their work that would match what the middle school is doing at this time, so that it's not a grade shock to them when they get up there. So things that are more point-based, like a spelling or math test, or things that lend itself well to that, I've been trying to do that. And just this week, I had a student get a B on something, and he said, oh, I guess I'm a B student. He did not say, oh, I should have gone back and done this element, or, oh, oh, I forgot to use capitals and periods, or, oh, I really, I didn't defend my thinking on that problem, or this is where I made the mistake. He didn't reflect at all on what he learned, or what he didn't. It was just, oh, I'm a B student.
You don't think that would also have, oh, I'm a 3 student?
Not in the way we communicate it. If we just put the number on there, then yes. If we just wrote 3 on the top and handed it back, but because we have those rubrics that go with it, they can clearly see exactly why. For example, my class just did a brochure on immigration and social studies, and there were various components. For example, the writing component of the brochure, the presentation of it, the content within it, and I could circle for each skill, what number they were on, but each number had a descriptor in it, so it was very clear to them. Three, my brochure was clear and easy to read. Or four, I did this extra formatting to the brochure, and that's why I went above and beyond. Or two, my writing content did not meet fourth-grade standards because I didn't include this versus a three. So it also has the very clear descriptors. So yes, if we just put a number on it, three, then they aren't going to know what they did, and that's what they would say. So again, it's having those rubrics that we want to start developing as well, and that was a chance that I got to practice developing, developing one for my grade-level team so we could use it consistently. So those were a couple.
By you asking the question so quickly, so part of this is societal, if you think about it. So what Sarah's getting at is, and we've read lots of books, and all the stuff on mindset, a student saying to themselves, I'm a B student, says, I'm not good enough, I'm not smart enough, no one thinks I'm smart, because in our society, an A is the goal, right? You could say, well, it's for the goal. No, the goal is to meet the standard. Right now, we don't say a B is meeting the standard, or C is meeting the standard. We don't, we don't say that because we don't equate it to that. But when you say you're a B student, it's below grade, but it's probably average. And we're trying to shift that mindset. The nation is trying to shift that mindset. This isn't a Mesquite-Norway shifting mindset. We're trying to shift away from kids already putting themselves in these boxes of, I'm never going to be, he's a fourth grader saying, I'm a B student, we're going to send him to a middle school and a high school, and he thinks, I may never achieve better than a B. I would not want that child thinking that for the next eight years, and going to, and saying, I can't go to college because I'm a B student. That's exactly what we want to eliminate.
Yeah, so I had to go across the classroom, no, wait, no, and explain what we could do to get that better next time. And then I just wanted to speak to the homework piece too, because I think in terms of making sure it gets done, I'm sure everyone does it differently. In my room, the students turn it in to me, and I still mark it as complete or not for that non-academic factor. So that's an area where we can hold them accountable for it. And I go through and correct them and hand it back to them if there's something that they need to fix so they have another opportunity to learn it, or if I can tell they really didn't get it, that's a sign for me as a quick little check-in that I need to do a small group with them, or spend some time at recess or after school with them. Or it's a dipstick for me to see if three-quarters of my class on this quick little preparation or practice, or practice assignment really didn't get it, then that's a signal to me, whoa, I really confused them today, or I must, I need to come up with another way to teach it so they'll understand. The homework can also be used as that reporting tool for myself. So I'm not necessarily giving them a grade because it was practice in terms of that 4-3-2-1 or A, B, C, D, but it can be used in other ways. I can use it as a non-academic factor to hold them accountable for it, but it's information for me as a teacher too. And so that's another way that I use it. And if I have students who don't turn in homework several times in a row, then I'm responsible for having that discussion with them. What's going on? Why are you not turning it in? And for a couple students this year, when they don't do it, then I have had to instill, or have them come and do it with me, or in our planning room, which is a lunchtime where they need to think about some consequences for stuff. So there is follow-up on my behalf when it doesn't get done. And also, no, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, then they also see that consequence if they're not getting it done, and then they do poorly on something that does count for a grade, then that's that discussion. I pull them in and say, okay, didn't do so well on this, you missed five different practices, and you missed that time with me. And hopefully, at least for me, I have the time, because I have 23, 24 students, that I can work with them. I know that'll be different in the high school and middle school, but there are so many other ways that we're holding them accountable, and communicating with them, and giving them that extra help. And then there is that consequence, and then we can talk to them, well, you didn't score well on this, but you didn't do the practice either. Maybe this is a life lesson, you need to do the practice, and you need to work with me, and then you'll do better the next time. Those are the points I wanted to make.
One quick question, Sarah. When you hand that rubric back...
Yes.
For the formative assessment, at the bottom, is there a overall grade, three, two, you met its standards, you exceeded?
What I did, for example, for that brochure, which would be, that was a summative grade, because it was a culminating end-of-unit hands-on experience. What I did is I looked at kind of the average of where they fell. I think there were six different categories on the rubric, I think, and then I looked where most of them fell, and then gave them that number, and then I also wrote additional handwritten feedback as well. Now, our elementary grade book doesn't, isn't the same as Miller High School, so I don't plug that number in anywhere, but I save it on a sheet and then look at it. plug that number in anywhere, but I save it on a sheet and then look at all my information and then can write based on that in ours, which is a standard-based report card. But I did kind of go through and I bond, most of the students were pretty consistent, threes across the board or mostly threes, a couple twos or fours. So I was able to really do that well. There wasn't anyone who was on total both ends of the spectrum.
So you're, excuse me.
Yep, sure.
Hot seat. Is that fourth grade?
Yes.
And you use rubrics for the four, three, two rubric? Yes. Someone to exceed standards or?
Yes. And I think before I had used them on occasion through my last six years of teaching, but particularly being on the grading committee, I learned more about how to create an effective one and use it more effectively. So I've been trying to do that for a few of our more hands-on projects that lend itself well to that. But since we grade standards-based in the elementary school, there's a lot of different evidence we collect. So we're not, we don't use that for every subject, for every assignment yet, but we're adding more and more as we go along.
Is that like?
Yes.
Do you use it in third grade?
Um, I know through second, third, and fourth grade for different things, there's something similar to a rubric for different projects. It's much more simplified. The middle lists all the targets that we're expecting them to be able to know and do and it says, I hit the target and we can circle it. And then there's a step below that says, I'm wondering. And then that's where we can mark things that they missed off the target or there's one above it that says, I think you went above the target. And then we can, that's kind of where that four piece comes in or what the old school would be an A plus, how they went above and beyond what we were expecting and did extra. So there's a simplified version that a lot of the grades are using. I think with it individual grades in classrooms, people are starting to experiment, as Tammy said, as people are learning more, getting more familiar with rubrics and the four, three, two, one and hands-on kind of stuff, then we're using it more. But I know in terms of that simplified one, that's used much more widely and I'm sure Mr. Groll can speak to what he's seen too, K four over there.
Now are those same, you have the same rubrics that you use across other elementaries?
Uh, these were just a couple that I developed personally and then shared with my team as we were working on projects. So they have not been shared out through the district yet, but they're saved and ready to do so if we go forward.
This is a reminder, for six years in a row, we sent a large amount of staff to CWAC, if you recall, it was the Southeastern Consortium at El Verno. And one of the elements of that training is everyone came back creating the rubrics that you're speaking on. They were called one-point rubrics, which is all the standards, the targets in the middle and you tell a student they were above it or below it. So it wasn't a four, three, two, one, but the course is actually, and we sent hundreds of our Mesquiteville teachers over six years to learn how to write those. So when I, when we talk about teachers having experience doing that, Sarah's speaking to that piece. Heather, is there something you want?
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I'm a teacher at Bay Lane. Oh, that's fine, don't worry. Actually, my kids all call me Heather too, or Mrs. Durst, so we look alike. I'm having a few thoughts on this as well. First thought is on homework and this possibility of taking away homework in the grading system and keeping it. And I think about, we all go back to our own personal experiences in real life. I grew up in Brookfield. I went through the Elmwood School District. And the way that homework was calculated in my classes in high school, it actually inflated my grade. And I fell into that same category that Tammy was talking about, about a student who may fall, I don't think I was basic, but I was minimal on some of my assessments. You know, I would get maybe a C on a test in school and that's not really minimal, but you get my point. But because of my homework being calculated into my grade, I actually ended up with B pluses and As in my classes. The prob, I mean, I was thrilled at the time. The problem with that was then when I was accepted to TW Madison and went there, I realized really quickly that I was not prepared for that level of rigor. And as much as we want our kids to go to these really high, well-known schools, if they get there and aren't truly prepared to succeed, then that's an issue as well. I also think back to, so we've got to be really honest with our kids with where they are so that they can make improvements. Because when I got on my report cards, you're getting an A, I thought, man, I'm doing great. I just keep doing what I'm doing and I'm good to go. And when I got to Madison, I realized that was not the case. I also think about this piece of homework and relating back to real life. So I am a teacher, obviously in the district. I think about, I'm in my second year here, so I was still being formally evaluated twice a year. Mr. Olson, our principal, came in to my classroom in October. He observed my lesson and then I met with him a little bit later and he taught me this really cool strategy about grouping students, grouping students based on what they need and then having them work in a workshop. I know he was coming back in December to be evaluated again. And that was kind of like my formative assessment, I guess, that determined whether I had a renewed contract here or not. And I knew he, since he had taught me that strategy about grouping students, that was like my learning target, he would be looking for that when he came back in December. If he were going to assign me homework on that per se, I would have had to turn in my lesson plans to him every week. He didn't do that for me. It was my responsibility to take that on myself and practice that. And I really like what Tammy was saying about the ownership of student learning. So I took that and I put it into my lesson plans every week, though I wasn't turning them into him. If I wanted to, I could have absolutely sent my lesson plans to him and gotten feedback and he would have given it, I'm sure, because that's what any good teacher would do. But if I hadn't incorporated it into my lessons every week when he came back in December, I would not have been proficient in it. And then that would have been my own loss. You know, I don't know if I would have a contract here for next year because I wasn't doing what he told me to do. But by taking that personal learning into it, it really developed my intrinsic motivation. I wasn't doing it to please my boss anymore. I was doing it for myself and in my case, more importantly, my students. But if you look at it from a real-life career perspective, doing it to continue to grow and just learning on my own, knowing that there were people that I could get feedback from along the way.
I think Dr. Buss could confirm you do have a contract soon.
I do have a contract for next year, yes. I did what I needed to do. I did my homework, so to speak, and I got my contract, but, so those are my thoughts.
So Tammy, it helps me to think of around this if I think of examples. So let me, let me spin an example for you. So I'm in my English class and I assign a novel. And at the end of the novel, after discussing it in class, I have a formative assessment of a critical essay to write and it has a due date. And Brett gets it in on time by my due date and he meets.
My parents would be shocked.
Three of the four standard-based things that I'm looking for. So he gets a three. Mike needs more time with it and, no, I just, you're on my right. And he hands it in three weeks. So it's a missing and then he hands it in three weeks later and he meets it and he gets a four. Because he exceeded, is what you're saying? Right. It was amazing. Right. He didn't get a stronger. So now Brett comes to me and says, but Mrs. Warwick, I met your deadline and I was crunched for time because I've got four other AP classes. If I would have had three more weeks, I could have met that target also. I ran out of time. So how does that work? Well, so part of the whole multiple opportunities, if he's, if he says, okay, I knew I met the standard, but here's what I would do to exceed the standard. If I'm Brett's teacher, which I would love Brett, I would say, what do you, what do you think it would take to exceed the standard? What would you do to your essay? And if he said, I would do this, this, and this, I would say, you know what, Brett? Take it back and you were good. And the English teachers on our committee, I can guarantee, and they're not in the room right now, will do the same thing. If he can identify what it would take, because I think there would be students who would say to me as their teacher, but I needed more time to do it. And quite frankly, will still propagate a three three weeks later. So, but if they have that opportunity. You know, my personal example there, and I am going to share it, is that, so if you recog, if you remember, you got this at the table today, right? My due date is to DAR Wednesday morning. I get it to her by noon so she can get it in the packet. Well, I had, my husband did surgery last week, so we had work session Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, I'm in hospital, I'm within Wednesday third. I couldn't get it to you. My pay is not going, I hope, my pay is not going to die. I, I would like to think, you know, there's no demotion between now and July one. Part of that, if you trust that I'm going to get the work, I'm going to get the work to you. I needed extra time. I went to Kelly and said, it's not going to be in the packet for DAR. DAR said, well, what are you going to do about that? And I said, I will get it to the board, but it won't be in the packet. It's going to happen sometimes, you know, it's a different example than Brett just saying, I want more time. But, but that whole late piece, I would like to still think it's quality, but it came to you later than it should, but it's an example of sometimes it happens. So to go back to your example, Lisa, I think any good teacher, if that student can say, here's what I know I can do better on, goes back to what Lindsay said, they know the stand, great, get it to me. If it's, I want more time and I'm going to turn in the same essay, your grade's not going to change. I'm giving you a three because you met the standard.
So the grades will be, I don't want to say adjustable, but they, they're fluid until the final grade is given. So rather than giving M, missing and incompletes, we haven't given zero. I mean, it pretty much tells the story that nothing was done. There was no.
The way the rubric reads right now, a zero says there was no attempts at, at learning.
And if you're missing or incomplete, you've had no, well, if it's missing, there's no attempt. If it's incomplete, maybe it's only a one. Or it might be a zero.
Yeah, because this one, this one talks about no evidence of meeting a standard.
Right.
Which by not turning it in inherently, you would say, is no evidence of meeting the standard. But if they haven't turned it in because their example was they're wrong in the hospital or something like that, they didn't.
But they can come back and get that zero up to a four, right?
True, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it goes back to the semantics. Our message is that M, the zero to some kids, and you guys have brought this up, some kids might accept the zero. We don't want them to accept the least score. We want them to see it's missing. It is missing and you need to accept it. So that's where some of that accountability comes in. If there's a zero in there, they might take the zero. You could say, well, let them take the zero. Great, then let them take it. But the M is in there to remind them and to remind a parent who's checking the portal, it's missing. The zero says it was poorly done or it's missing, could mean a lot of different things now, but the M says to the student, it's missing and I still, I still expect it to be turned in. The zero means I don't expect you to turn it in. I already put a score in the grade book. So it's just a different message that it sends.
What if the student comes to accept an I?
Say it again, sorry.
You said, you don't want the student to come to accept.
It's very similar, yeah.
Or what, you know, frequent I, what if they come to accept a?
So again, those are, those are extending circumstances. So a student is in chemotherapy, they have an I until they can complete the work. It's just incomplete work. We don't have enough work to say they passed the course. Teachers, like Susan, she's not going to just give out Ms. and Is and just hope kids turn it in. I mean, that is used for specific reasons, which you can, it's in the guidebook. And we'll be explaining, you know, greater details over to it, but.
Okay, I'm going to take a break and I'm going to go to the card if he's interested.
Would you?
I only have one, so just as he walks up, a reminder if anybody else in the audience wishes to address this topic with the board, just to fill out these cards and then the board can actually engage in discussion. So name an address for the record and then.
Philip Class, SAD three, W one five three Mystic Drive. I have one student who's at Mesquiteville, one who graduated. Always very proud of the school system here. I'm not sure where to start. I guess I agree on whole with a lot of your comments. I think I disagree with one of yours. Otherwise, you two agree.
I guess I got a three.
And that's it. I'll go right to that. I understand as a whole in life, things need to be evaluated and then implemented and then reevaluated as what you're doing with this whole process. I agree with the standardization, consistency, going through all the years from test corners all the way to the high school, there was that. But I don't know if you need to do everything you're looking at doing. Basic math tells me that for any segment of, that you're going to measure, the smaller the increments, the more accurate it is. You are now going from, and I kind of count it on my fingers, but if you start at A and go all the way down to D minus, you have roughly 11 increments. You now are going to four. I don't know, you know, if my son gets a B minus or a B plus, there's a big difference there. And actually, when he gets a B, I'm happy because my recollection is A is excellent, B is above average, and C is average. And my son may be average in some things. There's nothing wrong with that. And I don't know why you make it sound so bad. Some kids are good in things, some kids are average, and some kids are excellent. And I'll tell you what, I'm sorry, but what you said about, I don't mean, I apologize for pointing at you. What you said about real world isn't, you know, having to have things done on time. It is. Because in elementary school, what was great about this school district is they started planners. And I was just talking with a former boss of mine, we didn't have that. I didn't get it until I was in college. And his kids got it over in McQuan School District. It's invaluable. That's real life. It, it tells you, you need to get your stuff done, get it done on time. And when you made the comment that that isn't real world, my wife and I looked at each other and we rolled our eyes, that is. Because you know what? In most jobs, you've got one kick at the cat and you get it done and you get it done right. It has to be done at A. And I've tried to tell both my, my children that, that real world is, you don't get two kicks at the cat or three kicks at the cat or you turn it late. You've got to get it done, you've got to get it done right. Does it always happen? No. But you know what? After so many times, you won't have that job. That's the real world and that's a life lesson. So timing of finishing your, your, all your assignments is a life lesson and you should be graded on it. I don't know, please tell me any university, college, or technical college that has giving out four, three, two, ones. Four increments, not 11. I'd like to know that. I'd like to know how many of them are, are accepting this conversion because you have how many kids going to Mesquiteville High School? And they're going to be going, there's somebody there, I'm sure, with some different interest and he's going to be applying to a college or university you never heard of and they're going to look at that and go, wait, this is converting? And we're supposed to be converting something that has four increments to what they grade at 11 different increments? Colleges and universities hand out As, A minuses, Bs in most cases. I'm only aware of one locally and that's Carroll and I think it's wrong. They should have as many small increments as possible to give the best accurate measurements. And that's, you're getting away from it. You're watering it down. So you're actually saying now, in a few years, you'll be saying in high school, oh, it's all right to turn it in late. You know what? That won't wash at Madison. I'm sorry. But Madison won't accept that. Oh, you know what? Unless there's a doctor's excuse or the person maybe had chemo, a professor won't accept that. You're fooling yourselves by believing that. So why, I can understand doing that where you want to group and maybe in elementary and maybe even middle school, but you know what? You're moving out into the real world in high school. And until universities start doing four, three, two, one, zero, I don't think the high schools should even think about it. I don't think there's probably some other things that I have thoughts about just listening to all the whole discussion, but yeah. And I also asked, I'm sorry, I don't want to call your name, but prior when you had your closed session, how many school districts in the state are doing this as a percentage? How many in the United States? Is this a new standard? And why are we as a school district, I guess, trying to take the initiative? Why don't we let, you know, what's the rush? Again, and I'm not saying anything you shouldn't have in your standardizations and, and your consistency, excuse me, consist, please.
It's mission at 10 o'clock.
Yeah. I haven't eaten since probably noon and I was driving all day to get to this meeting. So I apologize. So I apologize. I'm just a little tired and, I guess, hungry. But, yeah, I'm trying to think if there's anybody who has any questions that may be wondering why I'm saying this or anything. But I think some of the, maybe we're behind the curve because we're not educators, but I'm watching some of the board members, and they have the same concerns that I do. I think you're really getting ahead of this. Why have just four? Why not have 11, 1 through 11? And you know what? I don't think there's nothing wrong with chasing points. Because, oh, my last point is, I'll tell you what. Would you want a doctor who was, who maybe to get into med school, had the 3.8 or the 4.0, or maybe took AP courses, and he had a 4.2, okay? He chased it. Would you want him to say, "You know what? I'm going to take a little longer to do this procedure, but in the meantime, he might be dead." So you know what? Yeah, but he was a four. No, I'm sorry. That's, the real world is, you do have to chase points, and you want the best, to be able to be weeded out and recognized. And not everybody is, you know, above average or excellent. People are average. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only card I had, so that was our commercial timeout, unless there's anybody else. Pay the bills. Yeah, right. Okay, so, where are we?
Can I ask, Doc Thompson, you're the one who initiated, or asked for the timeline to be stretched out for five years. I guess, I guess I'd like your thoughts and feedback on stretching it out to five years, the timeline.
Well, I think it is responsive to what the board was indicating as far as, you know, time, particularly at the high school, for teachers to spend on building rubrics or multiple assignments for students to have those retake opportunities. So it is responsive in that way. I think also, as we did, you know, as Tim indicated, the timeline can go as fast as teachers are responsive to also. So if the concern that having five years, isn't the reality, you know, having five-year timeframe isn't a reality, and they can get it done in three years, we can come back and keep talking with the board about our progress toward the goals, where we at. And, you know, every year, we can come back to say, "Well, we're at this point, we need to stretch this out, or we need to, you know, we can move this up quicker," and, you know, keep the board updated on that.
Well, another one of my concerns, you get away with just things like, another one of my things that come to my head or on my mind that concern me is, you know, initiatives, it's like, how many initiatives we got going? You know, and what is feasible? And I've always, and I've said this in the past, I sometimes get concerned, I said this with Dr. Schrader, too, that sometimes I, when we have so many stakes in a fire, how do we tell what's working, what we're having success at, and differentiate between them? And I see this as another pretty good-sized undertaking initiative, put on, you know, staff, teachers, and, you know, credit to everybody involved. I mean, I thank you for all your time, and you guys are obviously engaged and feel passionate about this. We have about 350 teachers, 325 or so. That's a lot of people to get up, to get consistent. You know, I guess I'd like this... We're looking to, say, approve something, and I'm really not, I kind of have an ideal. We're looking to approve a grading system. But I'd like to see what some of these assessment rubrics look like, or what they might encompass, or how... Yeah, I just, I see this as a big undertaking as an initiative, on the staff, the teachers, and getting everybody working at that.
Well, some of it aligns right with what we're doing. So, you know, our big initiative for next year is talking about assessments, and how do we build rigor and relevance into our assessment practices? And so while we're doing that, building in that rubric-based scale would make sense. It just kind of goes right along with what we're doing.
What is this one, what now we got, we also got Project Guide, which is kind of a hybrid learning system. Do these same rubrics and grading systems work in that? Since that's really not...
Yes, it's standard-based. Well, it's all standard-based, so, yeah.
Pardon?
Probably more so there than the rest, actually. It's obvious we're not on board with this as presented. I don't need to take a vote for that. I can pretty well tell. I'm not sure if we want to completely throw out the whole proposal, because I don't think, I mean, there's a lot of good hard work done. We're just not on the right, we're not on the same page completely. I don't know where to go from here, though. There's a number of points on here, I think, you know, 1 through 4, I think we're all in agreement, right there. You know, 5 or 6, 5 and 6, yeah, we need some discussions, and add 7. You know, I guess we go through this point by point, there's points here that we can take, and some that we want to modify, and some we want to throw away, but...
So do we want, the question is, do we want to do that here tonight?
No.
Or do we want to table it? At this point?
What's your, what do you want us to do at this point? Do you want us to take a vote on what you have in front of you right now?
No, not if...
Because we can do that.
I think what we need to do is, we need to make, we need to move forward with elements of standards-based grading, definitely, for the students.
We need consistency. I think we all agree on that. We need more consistency than we have. We need, at least, like Jim said, at a departmental level, that if I'm taking, you know, L to 1, regardless of what teacher, the expectations and the standards should be the same, regardless of what teacher you have. Now, what we use for grading in there, and, you know, what those expectations necessarily are, I mean...
We have to have a frame, though, in order for us to do better, right? I mean, otherwise, it's just having consistency around poor practice. And that we don't want. So we want parameters that will actually move us forward and go in the right direction. You might not get everything, that's what I'm hearing very clearly. But we do need to have some parameters that allow people to reflect on their current practice and do better for learning, for student learning. And that we, that we need in order to move forward. Otherwise, it's just people getting together and collaborating around poor practice, and it's just wasting time. You know, it's not giving us anywhere where we really want to go.
I think at the end of the day, if we're still just putting a B on somebody's homework and turning it back to them without any, without giving that student any feedback, we miss the point, right? I think we all agree with that. There's a best practice to be done in there to say, "We're going to give you, you know, here's your B. Here's where you missed the mark. Here's where you, you know, this was really good, based on what we told you ahead of time we expected you to learn," right? I mean, I think I'm...
That'd be part of it, right? But it's based on just point accumulation, for instance, rather than, you know, just like a... I was in a classroom, and she actually had to chuckle because it was the extra credit, bringing Kleenex and all of that, just last Friday. She said, "I know, I told my students that we can't do that anymore, but, you know, for next year..."
Everybody needed Kleenex.
But I did, right? But, so, I mean, they could, they could have a consistent practice and say, "Well, extra credit will include only toilet paper, but not Kleenex." You know, it doesn't get us anywhere. So we have to be able to say, "It is about standards. It is about the learning part of the organization, or the standard." And so it's not just the B. It would have to be based on standards, based on doing a child's chemistry.
Okay, so, this is an action item. If we're going to table it for future discussion, then we need a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so we'll...
Thank you for all your effort. It's a tough challenge, but we've got some good ideas going forward. What we want to, we appreciate the committee's effort, at least I do. I'm sure everybody else tabled those as well.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, so what are we leaving with tonight? What are you charging the committee to do?
Nothing at this point. We'll get back to you.
Well, you won't get back to me if it's back to Lisa and Don. Lisa and Don.
But right now, I think the board needs to have more, need a position to give you better direction.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, I'm going to rally the committee to do anything, okay?
You'd be guiding, sending up rudder lists out, and I don't want to do that either. As a board, relates to sort of rudder, give better directions.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. Next item is discussion items under the core strategy of continuously improving services and operations, bay lane sidewalk repair. Okay.
Hello, seeking approval. Seeking approval for a 181 linear foot sidewalk to be installed at bay lane to replace the current sidewalk as eroding. Took three bids, or three proposals per board policy. The winning proposal was DC Burbach at a total of $23,560. And I would complete the work this summer using this school year's budget.
Do we need action tonight, or is, and it's on here as a discussion item, so you would like action tonight? So I would entertain a motion of C first.
I will see.
I will second that.
Okay? I mean, everyone understands that we should probably break for Rick.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
On that whole unanimous part.
Sure.
So you said it's 181 linear feet? Well, how long is the existing one? Is it also 181?
Indeed, it is.
I'm just stalling.
Yes. We'll also put in some curving, too, some gutters, nice water flow, et cetera.
Turb-free concrete?
But that's not to be confused with square feet.
Right.
And linear. Helping to be...
Was the winning proposal, was that your assessment based solely on the price, or there are other...
Actually, there was a couple items that came through on the second proposal that had more in-depth. So we went back to the first bidder that had won and said, "What would it take for you to incorporate these?" And they still won after adding this.
Okay, so was it just boom, treat, this is, there are other factors, right? I mean, I guess my point was, you know, it's like, Lois is always best. I mean, from your own standpoint, were there factors in your, say, meeting with them, or talking to them? You like coming to practice, how bad you felt this, you know, because you get the feeling who's going to do the best job.
Yeah, actually, the third person, I wouldn't have gone with no matter what, because they were super late on getting the proposal in on time.
Oh, gee.
Finally, you say it.
They can make up for it. Okay, maybe better, so we've moved C.
School year four.
Unanimous on the sidewalk.
Sidewalk repair.
Yeah, so we were just, because we wanted unanimous approval, we waited for you a little. We stalled, we talked about linear feet.
Nice.
Linear feet.
Linear.
Linear feet.
Right.
Linear.
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 Yes, English major.
Linear or linear, I don't know.
Like them both.
Chapter 10.
That's like the Jefferson Adams argument.
Okay, moving forward. An "aye" vote says we're going to, we're going to vote on this tonight, and no vote says no sidewalk tonight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now, I'll entertain the motion for the sidewalk.
Come on.
As presented?
Sure. Okay, any other questions for Jeremiah about the sidewalk? And curbing gutter.
I assume it's good. I said it, it's getting done this summer.
Yeah, I'd like to start working as soon as possible, given that this contractor could start as soon as possible.
You said this year's budget.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Repair away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got you. I was hoping. Okay, next item, discussion item. I think Mr. Kewee was watching us on television, because his timing is impeccable.
That's a veteran, 20-year veteran.
There you go. Soccer press box.
Well, I'm excited to chat with you this evening about an idea to build a soccer press box on the east side of our Varsity Soccer Stadium. You know, our field, the pitch itself, is beginning to gain notoriety in southeast Wisconsin as one of the better natural turf playing fields around. We are, however, the only school in the Classic Gate that doesn't have a soccer press box. And so installing one would essentially, you know, finish off the facility. Why am I here today? The weather, although unseasonable this spring, has perhaps a benefit. We didn't play all the games that we were scheduled to play, and I'm predicting a surplus in my budget. I don't know that I would be here making this proposal in any other capacity. Just some brief history. In 2004, when we began to develop the 40-acre complex that's west of the ESC, the press box was included in the original plans. And when we went through and had to eliminate some of the maybe amenities, the press box was one of those that fell off the table. So why is there a need right now? Why do the other, most other schools have a soccer press box? We have a scoreboard control console, about a $1,000 piece of equipment, that drives the scoreboard, $15,000 scoreboard. And right now, that scoreboard console sits on a Rubbermaid table on the east side of our soccer stadium, underneath Stars and the Weather. And as you know, soccer is played in all kinds of weather. And water and electricity haven't gone real well. So we've experienced some problems with both the driver board and the scoreboard. So one benefit of soccer press box would be to house the control console where the scoreboard operator and timer would then sit. Secondly, press box, or a PA system. We don't own, the school district doesn't own a PA system. The soccer booster club, out of the goodness of their heart, purchased one. And it is housed in our west storage building, and operated from the west side, again, out under the Stars. And so, don't quote me on this, but I believe we've gone through two, or the Booster Club has gone through two PA systems. And so, another benefit would be to now house that equipment inside the soccer press box. A third potential benefit is storage. If you had the chance to look at the west storage building, you open up the door, it's 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. We've got an awful lot of equipment. And so, actually, we could alleviate some of that, those storage capability concerns, and use this press box that way as well. We've had some preliminary conversations with the contractor, with the vendor that's done some recent work on site here. And price range anywhere between $13,000 to a little over $20,000. And the styles and options are varied. So, right now, I won't know what my final budget number is. But in speaking with Mrs. Kelly, we are certain that out of this year's money, even if we decided to, even if you gave approval for the higher-end $20,000 package, that we could take care of that out of this year's budget.
All of it.
All of it.
What's the timeframe?
You won't know what the excess is until July, your, what you'll have. How soon would that need to be known so that you can start drawing up the plans and then building the press box?
Could you do it by the end of summer, if July 1st, you knew what you had?
Absolutely. We've got a pretty, we've got a template of what we'd like to see. So following your policy, upon your approval, we would just go out and start soliciting the bids based on the dollar figure that we had left. And believe we could get it done, Brett, before the start of the fall soccer season.
In Julie's memo from today, it says that the Booster Club... will lend to contribute $4,500 towards the project.
Correct.
Is that?
That's accurate.
The $4,500 plus the excess money you have would be enough to cover. Is that what I'm reading?
Correct.
The numbers didn't quite match up to in Julie's memo and your memo two weeks ago. You got the high end listed at $22,000, you have it listed at 18.
347.
347.
Right, and again, this is, I wouldn't ask you to, or would ask you not to hold me to hard and fast numbers here because this is, this is just kind of a fluid. I didn't want to go out and get formal bids unless you folks thought this was a good idea. And so, you know, the 13 on the low end represents kind of a small little shed. The 20,000 on the larger end is a, is a larger building, bigger windows.
Are we, obviously on those sides, obviously until I think, but just like a shed roof, just something that's a flat, obviously electric, they run to it, trench to it, right? No electrical, anywhere out there?
We do, we do have electrical in, in that vicinity.
Okay, so it's stubbed up or it's underneath a plate?
Correct.
So even.
That's where we run the control board from now.
I'm not familiar with, you know, sorry, are we talking something similar to what the board has put up like for the storage? I mean, are we talking 10 by 20, 15, I mean, just. What is it all at the house? I mean, it could be storage, obviously, but a control board, a couple of windows for observation, visual.
Yep.
Wire trench to it or electrical?
All, all of, all of the PA equipment and then someone to run it. So, you know, 10 by 20, 10 by 30?
And boosters, if you get 45. What about, I'm going, you know, are we talking probably wood, probably T11 or something like that or something?
Actually, yes.
Or steel, okay. What about, you know, I'm going maintenance or anything like that? Would that be covered under the boosters? Do you want to take care of like any, what's initial buildings put up?
Good question, I guess I would have to broach that. And I'm out of my league a little bit, I'm not sure what the ongoing maintenance.
I don't know.
Steel constructed building might be. It probably comes with a 15-year warranty, which is nice. Watch these other two facilities, how they wear two of those same types of facilities. So I think steel is its main.
Right.
I appreciate you much.
I look at all of our, all of our athletic programs and all the needs that we have. And we have a surplus on that, and we're going to spend any of that surplus. Is really our most pressing need? I mean, I look at, I'll use the personal experience. My son's on the freshman baseball team, we picked up his uniform last weekend. The pants that they provide us would have a tear literally that long on it. And we said, if they were, if they were like an extra large, you know, he's this tall. And I told him, said, yeah, we know, we're going to give them to you anyway, you go out by your own. You know, we've got so many other needs out there, at least in my area. I mean, you really, do you think this is our most pressing need right now? Or would there be other areas that these funds, if we're going to spend, would be more, better suited?
There's, there's no getting around our uniform rotation policy or practice. You know, it's a, it's a five-year plan, every, not every, but four varsity teams every five years get their uniforms, and then we cycle those down. I think I spent $10,000 to $12,000 last year on uniforms. I had to cut my budget this year. Could some of those lower-level teams use newer uniforms? Yeah, I think they could. But the year after we buy them, they're no longer new. And we have the same problem. The soccer press box, in theory, is there in perpetuity. You know, it's, it's, uniforms is that gift, that gift, that keeps on giving. You know, I don't think, unless you allow me more money in the budget, I'm ever going to get ahead of that curve. I'm never going to solve that problem of not having the best uniforms on the freshman level.
And I'm not just talking uniforms, I mean, you look at soccer, they already have lift fields and nice bleachers and everything else. And you look at girls softball, you know, they have these little portable things on one of the fields. You know, I, out of all of our needs, it just doesn't seem like, at least in my impressions, is something that, it seems more like a want than a need.
I would take exception with your comment about the softball fields. They're amongst the best around.
They are nice, but I mean, there's like.
Well, they're amongst the best around because we put it, well, right, but neither are a lot of other schools that we play in. We play at 4:30 in our conference, you know. So if we lit the softball fields, we'd be one of the only schools that had lights.
I'm not advocating lighting the softball fields, I'm just, I just think of all the things that we have out there, I would think there's probably other areas in our, in our athletics that this money could be more suited towards them.
And I'm just responding to your, when you said there's other needs, our softball fields, I got the impression.
No, I'm not advocating that necessarily, I'm just saying.
Our softball fields are really good.
Past January, I went to the WASB convention. And one of the breakout sessions that I went to was hosted by Ford Atkinson. And they were talking about sponsorship and selling sponsorships, not only for the athletics, but naming rights on the PAC, naming rights on a computer lab, whatnot. They're, they're in a fortunate position in that they have a large plant, sausage plant, Johnsonville Sausage or something, that they've been able to work with. And they've sold sponsorships for these type of items, these large, one, one-off items. They're not taking the sponsorship and putting it in their, in their annual budget, but they're using it to buy the scoreboard when the scoreboard breaks, buy a press box when we need a press box. Have we looked at anything like that? Are you familiar with their program and have we looked at anything like that?
Am I familiar with that particular program? No. Have I looked into that? No, because it's a, it's a somewhat of a philosophical shift. I, I've heard it described as prostituting public education. And didn't know that the district was necessarily interested in that. We dip our toe in it a little bit, don't we? With Coke and Pepsi and, and of course, the impro, then, you know, naming the stadium impro. But I don't know that we're out there on the ledge like maybe some of the other schools are.
Other discussion?
So what might be helpful, Scott, is, so the process that you took to come to determine that this is the priority with this money would have been what? I mean, it's just, you looked at the needs within your department and that rose to the top or?
Sure, there's an awful lot of things that I would like to see done. From a turf football field to an indoor practice shell that, that just aren't feasible in today's budget model. We're the only school in the Classic Gate that doesn't have soccer press box. We've incurred damage to our scoreboard council and our scoreboard because we haven't found a really good way with umbrellas and portable tents and garbage bags to make this thing work. So, I mean, I have a long list of facility needs. Yes, this one is a priority.
Scott, my other question for you is, we have a policy around boosters giving money to projects that they have to have the cash in hand. Are we aware, is this, they have cash in hand or is this, they're going to fundraise to get to it? Do you know that?
We do know that, and I'm well aware of that policy.
I know you are.
Me both, yes, yes. And it is in hand, it's, it's actually in Fund 21 right now.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So ultimately, this is a discussion item tonight. Are you looking for action on this item tonight? Or are you looking for just kind of a general from the board? Yep, this sounds like a good direction, I'll come back when I have more specifics. What's your, what are you looking for from us tonight specifically?
Ideally, the sooner that we know the board's direction, the sooner we can get more formal votes and start the process along. Working with our auditors as far as the funds go, depending on what funds are available at the end of the year, we can just ask the board to designate those specifically for this project so that we can proceed into July or August with the project and pay for it out of this year's budget.
So you're looking for approval of a direction, not a dollar amount? Is that a fair statement? Or are you looking for parameters of a dollar amount?
I would say your first statement is a fair statement. Again, I'm, I'm not clear right now what my bottom, what my surplus is going to be.
Right.
I have, I have a range of what this building might look like. And so, once we ferret out what the end of the year is going to look like, I'm going to have a better idea of the surplus number and then gauge the building around that. And then we could start potentially getting the three bids.
Right.
So conceptually, I'm looking for, yes, this is a good idea, or no, we don't think so.
Okay.
So your first statement, I think, is more accurate.
Yeah. So a motion of C would be appropriate?
No.
If we wanted to. Yeah, you could conceptually take action on saying, yep, this is an okay direction.
Up to $20,000, I mean, do you want to just put that in there so that, depending on what the surplus is, they can just move forward?
You could make a motion that says not to exceed the department's surplus plus booster funds on hand.
And you don't have to come back for an action again on the dollar amount. It'd be just, rather than doing it two separate conceptually and then.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd be interested in C, so.
I'm, I'm on board with this. I don't know that, I don't know if C is the right for right now, I don't know if that's, I'm trying to get back to.
Yeah, it's just a level, so C just moves for immediate action, it doesn't say, I mean, we then have to craft a motion, right? As to what that action would be. And so, it could be something as simple as, by resolution, the board supports this initiative and authorizes them to go and get their bids. But I think we should put it.
Then it comes back, right?
Well, that's up to us, right? Like, I'm on board, but I'm on board with putting a parameter out there that says not to exceed excess funds in their, in his budget, plus cash on hand from the Booster Club. In other words, if he comes back and he, at the end of the year, he says, well, I ended up with $15,000 and I got $5,000 from the Booster Club, I can move forward with $20,000 because that meets the parameter, and he moves forward. And he goes and he gets his bids, and now he's, now he knows where he can get a bid around, right? He's not borrowing, he's not taking from another fund, it's his budget, it's his fund, plus the parents in the Booster Club that have put money into the side for that sport, that are supporting. So, I mean, I'd go that far as a motion. Maybe that's too extreme for some of you.
Scott, is it possible to have, I know we're reactive because of the software.
Nothing, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I was just, I was going to give him a chance to respond to what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just, is it possible, I know when I, I know in the past, when boosters, when I brought, they brought like little kind of conceptual, you know, drawings of like, okay, there's a soccer field here, and then we're proposing a location, a shed, this, or the pole. It's just something simple, and I know the size of area and, you know, crazy, the amenity, I don't know how many amenities we have in there on the outlet box. Something like that. Just showing kind of what you're, what you're envisioning.
So you want to see plans?
Not plans, I mean, I could sit here and draw something that kind of, you know, here's a football field, there's a circle, there's a little building marked X, you know, maybe front elevation, you know, I don't want architectural plans.
But a design concept.
Something visually, here's a soccer field, you know, looking at, you know, some practice, you know, basic size. I don't have very too much depending on the parameters of the.
Exactly, right. Given the dollars that we, we'll have available, it's not going to be anything.
You know, it's.
It's going to be very basic.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I guess it would be kind of what, you know, what you would need to suit your needs, not build the building according to how much money we have left. I mean, why do we need to house this, you know, you're talking score or the board and that?
Scott, I just want to reiterate, I'm on board. I'm not trying to tell you no. I'm just trying to tell you how to tell you yes.
I understand.
So let's just take a wing at this. I'll move C.
Move on. Might be other discussion.
But then if we, okay, so if we move C.
Hang on, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, if we move C.
Yep.
And that goes through, then.
Then a motion has to be placed.
Then a motion has to be, okay.
And then we would debate in that motion, right? That would just allow us to get to the point of action tonight. So, maybe I don't even get a second, but I'll move C.
Second.
I got a second. Got a second. Okay, discussion on the motion, this would move forward for immediate action. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No immediate action. See how that works? Democracy at its finest. Okay, so we couldn't take action until next time, we could have it put on our next agenda as an action item, or we should have some type of a motion crafted? So by call, you were looking for was something like a 5x10 building, 12 feet high?
Something on the back of a nap, it just, you know, here's the soccer field, here's where the poles, you know, practical size, whatever.
Or even some pictures of others, like arrowheads or whatever. I think that would be sufficient, Scott, if you can give us an idea what it would look like.
Picture located here.
You didn't know what it's going to look like unless you knows if he has 12 or 22,000, that's a big difference.
Right.
Right? I mean, one's a, you know, probably.
He can show a variety of what.
Look at metal shed, and the other one might.
We may say, you know what, we only really need the 8x10 as a board, and they just, you know, we'll approve the 12,000. But I think Mike wants a little more idea what it looks like, so. And just get, get a few ideas from other districts.
Well, everyone has one, I mean, just kind of get an idea of what sizes, take that, service the needs, not build it, you know, they only got 25,000, so we're going to build it, you know, 20x whatever.
Turn the lights on, Scott, I don't want to get what you're writing.
Yeah.
Well, and for what it's worth, I've been out there in the rain, watching soccer games. I have no one affiliated with soccer, so this isn't like coming from anywhere. And I've, I've seen them with tarps over the table, doing what they need to do, and the scoreboard has gone out and everyone's talking about what the score is. So it's not been entirely pleasant from a spectator's standpoint to have those things go awry.
I do agree with Mike in that, in the, whatever comes forward next, in two weeks, either next week, I do, I guess I do want to have some parameters. Because to use Mike's example, if we do have $25,000 left over, plus $4,000 from the booster, I don't want to spend $29,900, you know, $29,500 if we can get by, or just because we have it.
I understand.
If spending 15 will.
It's what we need, to house the board and take the service and need.
Right.
And storage.
And whatever storage, whatever.
Or if 18,000.
There was no storage under the tarps.
Right, then they have to move everything, put it somewhere, which is kind of a pain in the rain.
Just something that, whatever, you know, whatever services the need.
Do you have enough for what to bring back?
We will come back with a recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, sorry we kept you here so late.
No problem, have a good night.
Good night.
Next item, under the core strategy of enhancing teaching and learning, three-year state-required technology plan. Are you looking for us to move C on this also?
I'm looking for you to do whatever you want to.
Table it.
That's fine. I won't be here next, next month, I'm sorry. It's a poor meeting, so.
Howdy.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
How are you?
Bob, sorry to keep you here so.
Not a problem, I was watching from my office and I would give Mrs. Gibbons a, probably a three on her Google Apps for the spreadsheet piece. I was paying attention.
What would it take to get it out? Never mind. Move on. Go for it. What do you got for us?
Executive summary, page two of the information you have. Same process we've gone through every three years for, seems like forever.
It seems like a book, isn't it?
Shorter this year, we're, I think we're at 38 pages right now as opposed to the normal 50 plus. I don't have the appendixes that are listed under the research piece. Because you've seen all those, that was in the December board packet. So I didn't put those into the, I was trying to keep the size of the packet down. Didn't work all that well, anyway. And you've seen all the other pieces in here. We have three different areas we're working on. The personalized learning with the one-to-one, the supporting exemplary teaching, and that's pieces that came out of a number of different committees, next generation and the other pieces. And then the third one of the continuing infrastructure improvements. So I actually had a discussion tonight a little bit with my successor, Tony, about some of those pieces. So it sounds like that you had some discussions around those as well, so. Same process as always. Just a fun DPI required, federal E-rate required document that, in this case, I think it matches up really well with our strategic planning that Dr. Thompson's in charge of.
When's it due, Bob?
We have to have it approved before June 30th so we can get it to DPI.
So we can either do it tonight or we can do it, oh, look at that.
You can do it tonight or you can do it June 17.
We could have a special meeting on June 29. Okay, the motion is to move forward for immediate action. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For this one, we like. I'd now entertain a motion.
We didn't like other things.
Second.
Also this one.
Any other discussion? You don't have any other changes you need to make? This is the complete document.
The only thing that'll be in here as well will be the other appendixes that I mentioned earlier.
Okay.
So other than that.
When you mention that, I just wanted.
Yeah, other than that, it would go to, and again, you've seen all those appendixes in December. I just did not put them in this document.
Sounds good.
It would have been a much longer packet, yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries you down. Thanks.
Thank you.
Three hours of waiting, three minutes of work.
I told my wife I'd be talking for about two minutes and I was off by about a minute, so.
Nice.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you're not here next time, Bob?
I will not be here.
Best of luck, we'll miss you.
Absolutely.
Wish you well.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, I'll work. Wish you well in your future endeavors.
Oh, good. You gotta, Tony Spence is gonna do a great job. I know Tony for a few years, so.
Been a pleasure, Bob.
Thanks, man.
Yep.
Thanks, Bob. You guys don't have to leave yet, you know, you can still stick around.
Well, there's more meeting to go. Here we go.
Here we go.
Open enrollment residence information.
We do better with a crowd.
Do we have to move C? I think we see.
Don't think we have to move C. Do we have to move C?
Do we have to move this, or is this for our talk?
I think it's such a, if you approve the number of spaces, it's a chance.
Okay.
We ask for residents' information as to where our applications are coming from and where some of our students.
These are new open enrollees? Is that, or does that include existing open enrollees?
These are the new.
New.
Brand new, yeah, okay.
The back is existing.
Pardon me?
Back, what's that?
The back is all of the applications that we see in and all of the applications that we keep out in the residence districts that our applications in came from and the residence districts that some of our students are applying to go out. And you'll notice there are, there's a total of 106 applications out, but that represents 79 students because students can apply to up to three school districts. So the maximum that would be going out is 79. And of those 79, only 19 actually attend school and must be home early. The rest of the, of the applications out are either students who have recently moved into the district, wanna stay at the district that they're currently attending. There's quite a few home school students that apply to go out to, for example, the virtual schools. And then some kids are in private schools and they wanna move with their peers to whatever high school those kids are going to. You know, if they're in a private school, it may be in another district.
So only 19 of our kids apply to go elsewhere.
Correct. And that's assuming even that all of these applications would even be approved. That's not gonna happen because similar to what happens here, we only have X number of spaces available. Some of the districts that these children have applied to are not going to have the space, though they're designed by the district. There's actually 79 of our residents that have applied to go out, but only 19 of those kids really attend the school in their district right now.
So when we, when we say, okay, we've got room for, it looks like five at the high school, right? Do we, we say, we got room for four 12th graders? Should we say, do we say, we have room for four 12th graders or do we say five at the high school?
Those were students who were entitled to preference. And we didn't have an excessive number of applications at those grade levels.
Yeah.
They were able to.
The reason I'm asking is I, unless they surprised me and didn't apply this year, I know somebody who would have applied for a ninth grader and they have another child that's in our district. So it would have been a preference, but I don't see any ninth graders on here, so I would just.
There was no space available for ninth graders.
Okay.
And how do, when we receive the applications, how do we select the students? What method do we?
If there's more applications than spaces available, space goes first to the kids who are preference. That would be students who are currently attending school in the district they've recently moved out. They're here on the tuition waiver. Or it could be a sibling who are currently attending open enrollees. If there's more applications than spaces that preference, kids are randomly selected first. Then there's a waiting list that would be created. If, let's say, we have enough spaces to accommodate preference plus, as an example, five more kids, then all of those kids at that grade level, the five, the five additional would be randomly selected.
You know, is that just a pile of the hat?
Yeah, exactly. So that everybody gets to hear and.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Moving on, policy 143, financial advisor, second reading.
Hey, Julie, any changes?
No changes to the policy itself. The information that we're bringing back is clarification on the word advisor and what that means. With the MSRB's G23 rule, using the word advisor specifically limits the district in what kind of sale that we can do when it comes to selling bonds. So you remember that we wanted to go out for a negotiated sale at the time that we were gonna refinance our bonds. Because we had this policy in place that specifically says we have a financial advisor. And in our minutes, that financial advisor was named as Baird. We could not do the negotiated sale because Baird could not be an underwriter and advisor to us. So basically, by changing this to a consultant, we're saying that the district does consult on a financial basis with a company right now that's Baird, for all things. It could be for bonds, it could be for forecasting, it could be a number of things. So we're saying that we have somebody that looks out in our best interest as a consultant. If we should choose under certain circumstances to go out for competitive sale or negotiated sale, we couldn't have Baird named as our advisor and given that option. So by saying that we are having a financial consultant, we have somebody that consults with the district. We have to take the word advisor out, otherwise it relates specifically to that rule that doesn't allow for us the flexibility as a district to choose which type of sale we wanna move forward with. So that's where the legal piece of it comes in.
Can we get confirmation on that legal piece that we're quoting?
Yes.
So next time when it comes back for approval, do we need to vote on a financial consultant then? Since Baird is our financial advisor? Or will that automatically transfer, sort of?
It would transfer.
It would, okay.
Right, the relationship with Baird is, is what we want it to be. Our policy is actually one of very few policies that exist out there, naming a consultant. It's good practice to have one. It's good practice to, every two to five years, go out for bid. But I think this would just carry them into that role.
I'm just making sure we're doing things correctly.
There is no law that says we have to have this policy. This is more of a district choice. So we can make, we can move Baird into that role.
Okay.
Go back next time for action.
Yes.
We're not moving forward anymore, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't ask.
2013-14 budget.
I have nothing to report on at this time.
What's it looking like at the state level for the student?
The student information system right now, there's a lot of discussion on.
I think you're talking about perpule?
Perpule and.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
It's 11 o'clock.
On hold right now. I mean, there's not a lot of discussion on that right now.
So it still looks like it's not sure, but it.
Brett, have you read the paper all weekend?
Yeah.
Pardon me? You've been reading the paper, right?
Yeah.
So you know everything that she knows right now.
Okay.
It's 11 o'clock in the.
I wouldn't figure it out, too.
Yeah, we are still, I mean, the 150 is still on the table. It's not.
It's not dead yet.
It's not dead.
Yeah.
But there's a lot more focus on about where is the student information system and some of those other pieces right now.
Yeah.
Okay, information follow-up. Motion for closed session. You know what, it'll take, it'll take us two minutes. It really will, maybe three.
Say one minute because we know the triple.
Did we get a motion?
Yes.
I got a motion.
Now I got a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are in closed session as soon as everybody else leaves.